There are other written materials that members might want to offer as part of our markup today. If you would like to submit materials, please send them to the email address that has been previously distributed to your offices, and we will circulate the materials to members and staff as quickly as possible. I would also ask all members, both those in person and those appearing remotely, to mute your microphones when you're not speaking. This will help prevent feedback and other technical issues. You may unmute yourself anytime you seek recognition. Pursuant to notice, I now call up H.R. 350, the Domestic Terrorism Prevention Act of 2021, for purposes of markup and move that the committee report the bill favorably to the House. The clerk will report the bill.
H.R. 350 to authorize dedicated domestic terrorism offices.
Without objection, the bill is considered as read and open for amendment at any point. I made extensive opening remarks when we began consideration of this legislation a few weeks ago. Therefore, I will not repeat them today, and I will instead go straight to calling up the amendment and the nature of a substitute so that we can resume consideration. Excuse me. I now recognize myself for purposes of offering an amendment in the nature of a substitute. The clerk will report the amendment.
Amendment in the nature of a substitute to H.R. 350, offered by Mr. Nadler. Strike all that follows after the end.
Without objection, the amendment in the nature of a substitute will be considered as read, and shall be considered as base text for purposes of amendment. As with my opening statement, I would refer all members to my statement on this amendment from the prior markup, and I will forego any additional comments.
Mr. Chairman.
What purposes Mr. Isa seek recognition?
Chairman, I have an amendment at the desk. I offer an amendment.
The clerk will report the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I reserve a point of order.
Point of order is reserved.
Amendment to the amendment in the nature of a substitute to H.R. 350, offered by Mr. Isa of California, out at the end of the bill, the following: Section 8 prohibition...
Without objection, the amendment is considered as read and Mr. Isa is recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think it's very appropriate, because we are on the subject of terrorism, that number-one terror and longstanding terrorist state, Iran, today enjoys the ability to sell its oil to fund its terrorism around the world. At a time in which we are debating how to wean ourselves off of the oil from another state sponsor of terror, in this case, Russia, we have to consider that we cannot simply backslide into using Iranian oil. For that reason, it's a simple amendment. It's a bicameral amendment, because it follows the same Cruz, Ted Cruz Senate suggestion, that we no longer have any ability to waive the purchase of Iran oil. It doesn't mean they won't sell oil. It means they're going to have to discount it or sell it to somebody who doesn't mind having blood on their hands. So I think it's pretty straightforward. Certainly, America has the ability to produce all of its own oil and even be a net exporter. So any prohibition on the buying of Iranian oil or Russian oil would not and could not affect our ability to take care of our own oil needs if we chose to. So very simple, very straightforward, one-line amendment. With that, I yield back.
The gentleman yields back. Does the gentleman insist on his point of order?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be heard briefly on my point of order. First, I would like to reassure the movement of this amendment that the United States, under current sanctions regimes, doesn't in fact import oil from Iran, which is a good thing. But this is a bill about domestic terrorism, about cross-agency participations in combating domestic terrorism in this country. This is not germane to the legislation before us, and therefore I press my point of order.
Mr. Chairman, would the gentleman yield for just a moment?
Does the gentleman wish to be heard on the point?
I would like to be heard on the point of order.
Gentleman is here. I mean, gentleman is recognized.
Thank you. Iran sponsors Hezbollah. Hezbollah operates throughout the world. Iran has sponsored terrorists who have come to our shores in the past. So the idea that Iranian oil money doesn't turn into U.S. domestic terrorism simply isn't supportable. And I know the gentleman's objection is well meant, and I understand that at the current time, we may not be buying Iranian oil. But at the end of the day, Iran knows no borders in their support of terrorism, including Hamas and Hezbollah, and has sponsored attacks, including on the U.S. soil. So for that reason, I would insist that this point of order...
If the gentleman would yield...
Of course I would yield.
I would say, first of all, again, it doesn't change that this legislation relates to domestic terrorism and cross-agency coordination. The fact that you've posited some theory that somehow Iranian oil is an interesting byproduct or contributes to that, it's just not a part of the legislation. It's an interesting subject. Maybe in the Foreign Affairs Committee, we can look at it, but it's not germane. No matter how bad Iran is, no matter how bad financing Iran's terrorism operations is, it has nothing to do with the bill before us, so it's not germane.
I am prepared to rule on the point of order. Clause 7 of House Rule 16 prohibits amendments that are on a subject matter different than the proposal that is under consideration. The bill we are currently considering is the creation of offices to monitor, investigate, and prosecute cases of domestic terrorism. The gentleman's amendment has nothing to do with this. It's a different subject than what we are considering in this bill. Therefore, the amendment is not germane and violates Clause 7 of Rule 16. Is there any further amendments? Are there any further amendments? What purposes Mr. Big seek recognition?
I have an amendment at the desk.
The clerk will report the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I reserve a point of order.
Point of order is reserved.
Amendment to the amendment in the nature of a substitute to H.R. 350, offered by Mr. Biggs of Arizona, page 16, line 10, after act, insert the following: None of the funds authorized to be appropriated in this act.
Without objection, the amendment is considered as read, and the gentleman is recognized for five minutes to re-explain his amendment that we've all forgotten.
Mr. Chairman, I'm hurt that you forgot.
No, no, no. I simply wanted to say, you had five minutes to explain your amendment a few weeks ago. I'm not going to hold you to that. I'll give you another five minutes.
Bless you. Bless you. Thank you so much. What my amendment does is indicate that none of the funds authorized in this act shall be used for monitoring, analyzing, investigating, or prosecuting parents who are exercising the First Amendment rights to speak out about their children's education. So while many schoolchildren received the lessons through remote learning over the last two years, a lot of parents grew concerned at the ineffectiveness of the virtual classroom. The circumstances of the learning environment were bad enough. But fortunately, as their children received instruction from their schools under these less-than-optimal circumstances, a lot of parents' eyes were opened to what their children were actually being taught in school. As a result, those parents became very concerned, and they began attending school board meetings in greater numbers, voicing their outrage at the various anti-American ideals that were being, had been taught virtually, and they had a better feel for what the curriculum for their children looked like. And what was the response of the school boards? Was it to listen to the parents? No. Was it to consult parental input in their children's education? No. Instead, the National School Board Association wrote a letter to the Biden White House requesting that the Patriot Act be used in an effort to restrain these parents. Obviously, the Patriot Act was never intended to be used in this manner. Former Chairman Sinzenbrenner, the primary author of the Patriot Act, stated that the Justice Department, quote, "lacks authority to invoke federal anti-terrorism laws to chill protected expressive conduct." He continued and stated that using the Patriot Act in this way would intentionally subvert the text and intent of the law. Less than a week after receiving the letter, the A.G. wrote a memo directing all U.S. attorneys to meet with local law enforcement and coordinate with the FBI on how to investigate threats against public officials at school board meetings. In a press release that followed the Attorney General's memo, the National Security Division's involvement was mentioned. And according to whistleblower, the FBI's Counterterrorism Division was asked and tasked with implementing the Attorney General's directive. The whistleblowers revealed to us that the FBI created a threat tag, "EDU officials," to label and track parents. That's absolutely unacceptable. This amendment merely ensures that the FBI does not use the EDU officials threat tag or create a similar threat tag to identify and track concerned parents. We must ensure that parents do not have their First Amendment rights of speech petitioning and assembly trampled by an overzealous federal government. This is not an imaginary tag. This was brought forward to us by a whistleblower. It's not been undermined or called into question, and we need to make sure that this doesn't happen, and this amendment is vital to doing that, and I urge the adoption of my amendment. Thank you.
Does the gentleman insist on his point of order?
No, Your Honor, but at the right time, I'd like to be heard. But no, I do not. No, the gentleman does not insist on his point of order. I will recognize myself in opposition to the amendment. Let's be very clear about this amendment. It has absolutely nothing to do with the substance of the bill before us and the very important issues that this legislation would address. It also has nothing to do with the Attorney General's memo that is the supposed rationale behind this amendment. Parents should vote their opinion about, parents should voice their opinion about the upbringing and education of their children. That is their right, and some would say their duty. There is nothing wrong with that, and it is fully protected by the First Amendment. No one would argue with that. It is when the voicing of an opinion crosses over into harassment, intimidation, and threats of violence that it becomes cause for concern. That is what the Attorney General's memo calls on the Department of Justice to discourage, identify, and prosecute when appropriate. That seems utterly uncontroversial to me. Unless you are seeking to protect a parent's ability to harass, intimidate, threaten, or even engage in violence against school administrators, board members, teachers, and staff, and I certainly hope that's not the case, I really do not understand the purpose of this amendment. And to use this legislation, which seeks to combat the real and growing threat posed by domestic terrorists, to further a Fox News conspiracy theory, is an insult to the communities across the country who have been the victims of hate-fueled violence at the hands of white supremacists and other domestic terrorists in our midst. This legislation would identify the greatest domestic terror threats and would concentrate law enforcement resources to addressing those threats. If my colleagues have ideas for how to improve that effort, I welcome their suggestions. But this amendment does nothing to further that cause, and it only serves to distract and divide when we should be coming together to find solutions to the dangers of domestic terrorism. I urge all members to oppose the amendment. I yield back the balance of my time. Who seeks recognition? No one seeks recognition? Oh, I do.
I seek recognition.
I do. For what purposes Mr. Bishop seek recognition?
To strike the last word. Gentleman is recognized. Look, it's fascinating. The chairman's opposition to the amendment strikes me as astonishing. We know, you know, we wouldn't know, to emphasize a point that Mr. Biggs made, we would not even know that there exists this threat tag called "EDU officials" unless a whistleblower from the FBI had decided to provide it to the ranking member, to provide that information. That would not have been disclosed to us. Notwithstanding that three days after the Attorney General issued his problematic memorandum, I asked in a letter for all communications relevant to that action. So the FBI has concealed it. The Department of Justice has concealed it. We know that it exists. We know because the majority's witness, a United States attorney from the state of Washington was here some weeks ago and in pun questioning by me, could not give examples of anyone acting in what the chairman refers to as harassment, intimidation, threats, or even acts of violence. I don't even know what the chairman means by harassment, intimidation, threats. Does that include people just being angry at the school board? What if somebody finds that harassing? Is that what the FBI has been sent across the nation to engage in these meetings? To call out parents? Is the chairman in position to assure us, given what's happened, without any disclosure by the Department of Justice or by the FBI? Is the chairman in position to assure us that this tag hasn't been applied to parents of American schoolchildren, to any of them? Is he sure? All that the majority can think about, all they're anxious to do is demonize people, call them white supremacists. But here we have an example that we know that has, that process has been used by the Attorney General of the United States to call out a nationwide polemical movement, a nationwide protest, to intimidate it, to stigmatize it, to chill it, in direct violation of the First Amendment, and a simple expedient of saying, "We will not use any funds." Can't use this threat tag to demonize and categorize and log parents of schoolchildren in counterterrorism databases of the FBI, and we can't even pause for a moment to allow that to go in? Of course it should go in. Terribly sound amendment, and I thank the gentleman for offering it. I yield to the gentleman from Arizona, Mr. Biggs. I appreciate the gentleman yielding. I appreciate his argument and the passion and clarity that he stated the position. I want to point out something, one more thing that I think is relevant here. When there is an issue that goes on in a local school board, that's what local law enforcement deals with so well. They take care of it. There is absolutely no reason to continue this charade where you're going to allow the FBI to dance around like they're investigating domestic terrorists and what they're looking for, our parents showing up, exercising First Amendment rights, tagging them with this tag, "EDU officials." This amendment is not meant to excite or titillate, as has been inferred by the chair. This is actually trying to get at something that both sides should be willing to stand for. And quite frankly, what I thought all of us stood for originally, at least once upon a time, was the protection of the free exercise of the First Amendment right to protest, assemble, So there's nothing imaginary about this. This is a real issue, and this amendment would take care of it. I yield back to the gentleman from North Carolina.
I yield back.
The gentleman yields back. For what purposes the gentlelady from Texas seek recognition? You're muted.
Strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the emotion of the gentleman, but my daughter goes to her school for her six-year-old twins, and I've never heard her threaten a teacher, go to the school board meeting, and threaten school board persons for any reason whatsoever. This has nothing to do with parents who dutifully want to engage with their children's education. But what it does have to do is a Reuters report that is documented, "School Boards Get Death Threats Amid Rage Over Race, Gender, and Mass Policies." They get the kind of death threats that are read, have been sent to Brenda Sheridan, a Loudoun County, Virginia, school board member. It reads as follows: "It is too bad that your mother is an ugly communist whore," said the hand-scrolled note, which the family read just after Christmas. "If she doesn't quit or resign before the end of the year, we will kill her, but first, we will kill you." No, I do not think any exemption should be made, and I don't think that it is in any reality that the FBI decided to attack parents. When we began this hearing three weeks ago, and three weeks ago, my colleagues and I debunked the idea that the FBI is tracking protected First Amendment speech, it is simply not true. A USA Today headline says, quote, "Fact-check: FBI is not using threat tags on parents who protest at school board meetings." This is from last November. A headline from last October simly says, "Fact-check: False Claim the FBI Deemed Critical Race Theory Protest Is a Terror Threat." Of course not. First of all, proponents of critical race theory to suggest that children should not be taught about the history of all Americans are plain racist. Month after month, our colleagues have repeated a false claim while ignoring the real threats and violence caused by domestic terrorism. And let me be very clear, Mr. Biggs, amendment is not racist, but the attitudes of those who wish to misuse critical race theory and suggest that teaching about George Washington Carver should not be taught. I question whether they want to hear about all the stories of all Americans. I am a parent, and as a parent, you always want what is best for your children. The Constitution protects your right to voice your opinion, and over the years of that time when I had to go to elementary and middle school, I did so, at school board meetings and to participate in civic debate. It protects your right to peaceful protest, which is foundational to our democracy. But peaceful protest is not the reality some of our school board members are facing. Across the country, school board members have faced threats of violence and even death. As I said, Reuters interviewed 33 school board members across 15 states and reviewed threatening messages from individuals and public records requests. They found 220 intimidating messages. School officials or parents in 15 different counties received or witnessed threats they considered serious enough to report to the police. Those threats often came from not from local parents, but from people with no connection to the school boards. These messages include threats to school board members, children. They include anti-Semitic rhetoric, references to Hitler and the Holocaust. They include hateful messages about the LGBTQ community. These people are often parents themselves who have taken on local public service. They've been called, quote, "traitors of America." They've received threats of rape. One school board member was sent a picture of his campaign lawn signed riddled with bullet holes. In the three weeks since we last met on this important legislation, a school board president in Wisconsin received an anonymous email from someone who threatened to shoot up the next board meeting because the school is promoting LGBTQ inclusive policies, recognizing the beauty of all of our children. Our law enforcement enforcement divisions from local police to the FBI have taken these threats seriously, as they should. I support our police and federal agents in the effort to investigate whether these threats are credible or all threats that violate federal law. I support giving law enforcement the tools to collect that information and to use that information to know when action is needed to keep our communities safe. So I support the Domestic Terrorism Prevention Act to make sure that we are being smart about gathering the necessary information to respond to domestic terrorism, to have a targeted response that can identify when threats are credible, and to help law enforcement keep all of us safe, our students, teachers, faith leaders, local elected officials, people of color, and people of all faith. I appreciate your intent, Mr. Biggs, my ranking member, but I oppose amendment that would weaken that effort, and I'm proud to support the underlying bill. I would like unanimous consent to submit into the record, USA Today, fact-check: False Claim the FBI Deemed Critical Race Theory Protest Is a Terror Threat. US Today, fact-check: Dealing with threat tags. Reuters, School Boards Get Death Threats. The New York Times, I Don't Want to Die For It. School Board Members Face Rising Threats. And finally, Wisconsin Public Radio, O'Clare, School Board President Reports Receiving Death Threat on Radical Transgender Agenda. Mr. Chairman, I would ask unanimous consent to submit that.
Without objection, the gentlelady's time has expired. For what purposes Mr. Jordan seek recognition?
Strike the last word, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman is recognized.
I thank the chairman. Last fall, October 21st, when the Attorney General was in front of this committee, we asked him, "What was the basis for the very first sentence in your memorandum of October 4th, 2021?" So the memorandum he had sent out just two and a half weeks prior to testifying in front of us, the first sentence reads, "In recent months, there's been a spike in harassment, intimidation, threats of violence against school administrators, board members, teachers, and staff." We asked him, "What was the basis of that? What investigation? What data? What did you look at? How did you make a determination to put that as the very first sentence in your memorandum, telling the FBI to set up a snitch line on parents? What was the basis for that?" Anyone remember his answer? Anyone remember? He said it was the letter sent from the School Boards Association five days earlier. The letter that talked about using the Patriot Act treating parents as domestic terrorists, the letter that the School Boards Association has since apologized for. In fact, I got that letter here somewhere that they sent to us, where they say, "We regret and apologize for the letter." They've had all kinds of states leave their association. So that letter that they apologized for, regret they ever sent, had states leave their association because of, was the basis for the Attorney General, according to his testimony in front of the Judiciary Committee. And then we had the whistleblower that the gentleman from North Carolina just brought up. The whistleblower who sent us the communication sent to FBI agents around the country that says, "We ask that your offices apply the threat tag to investigations and assessments" for the very purpose that the Attorney General said came from, that first sentence that he had in his memorandum came from the School Board Association, which apologized and took back their letter. And all this amendment says is, "That threat tag, don't use federal funds for that threat tag if moms and dads are showing up at school board meetings and voicing their concern about the upbringing and education of their kids." I wouldn't know why we all wouldn't be, this should be unanimous by voice vote. So our concern is why the Democrats are opposed to this. This seems so straightforward. I mean, we shouldn't, we shouldn't... The organization that prompted this whole thing, started this whole thing, actually, I think it may have been, may have been the other way around. It may have been actually the government going to them, the Biden administration going to the School Boards Association, asking them to send the letters as pretext to do what they want to do. We don't know that for sure, but we've seen emails that suggest that. This is a simple amendment. We should, we should just take this straightforward, should be easy, should be unanimous, voice vote, and should be part of the bill. I would yield to the gentleman from Arizona to sponsor the amendment.
I thank the gentleman. I appreciate the arguments that have come from across the aisle about there's threats of violence and even death. That's what my good Chair of the Crime Subcommittee said, and I appreciate that. And if that's the case, then that might change things, but it would not affect this amendment, now would it? Because what this amendment deals with says very specifically here, that you can't use the funding or the threat tag of "EDU officials" or any similar threat tag with what? With respect to parents who are doing what? Not threatening violence, not threatening death, no, but voicing an opinion about the upbringing of their own children to the school board. Can't you do that? Apparently, you can't do that. Apparently, you guys think they can't do that. Or simply voicing an opinion about the education of their children. Why don't we proscribe that? It's very straightforward. If someone is threatening violence or death, guess what happens? They get reported to the police and, if we're necessary, to the federal authorities. But we're talking about opinions, about upbringing and education. And I'll yield back to the gentleman. Thank you.
I thank the gentleman. So Terry McAuliffe says government's smarter than parents when it comes to the education of their kids, and a parent shows up at a school board meeting and disagrees with that statement, says, "No, no, no, I actually think moms and dads know what's best for their kid's education." All this amendment says is, they shouldn't have a threat tag put next to their name for saying something that basic. That's all, that's all this says, and you guys are against it. That I yield back.
The gentleman yields back. For what purposes the gentleman from Rhode Island seek recognition?
I move to strike the last word, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman is recognized.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, no one has ever suggested that a threat tag should attach to a parent who goes to a school board meeting. No one other than my colleagues on the other side of the aisle who have made up this claim. Mr. Biggs said, "This whistleblower memo says to label and track parents." That is not true. Mr. Jordan said, "It's a snitch line on parents. The whistleblower told us that." That is also not true. I made this point last time we were together. No, I will not yield.
Just for a question.
I will not yield. This is the whistleblower memo that they're talking about. I'm going to introduce it into record. The word "parent" doesn't appear in the memo. Talks about a spike in harassment, intimidation, threats of violence against school administrators, board members, teachers, and staff. So you have that. That's made up. That's number one. Number two, Merrick Garland testified under oath as Attorney General of the United States, he would never allow a tag on a parent who went to a school board meeting, ever. That's number two. Number three, we have fact checks. Fact check, FBI is not using threat tags on parents who protest at school board meetings. No, the FBI adding threat tags to parents' school board meetings. They're right there, two separate independents, and they say, "This claim is false. Nothing in the letter states that the tag will be used against parents who protest at school board meetings." Now, you wonder, sometimes you feel like you're in the production staff for Fox, like we're just developing content so they can put something on TV that they think is politically valuable. That's not based in reality. So they're going to talk about it again and say, "Parents should be involved in the education of their kids." Of course they should. Of course, parents should continue to go to school board meetings and be engaged. No one's suggesting to the contrary, but to make up this straw man that somehow someone's labeling concerned parents as terrorists is nonsense. And to the chairman's point, what's most disturbing about this bogus claim, which is made over and over and over again because it polls well, is it, it disrespects the real issue that this legislation is intended to address. A recent analysis from the Center for Strategic and International Studies shows that domestic terrorism in 2020 was at its highest level since information has been collected for almost three decades. And according to Michael McGarvey, the Assistant Director for Counterterrorism Division of the FBI in 2019, he said racially motivated... the FBI in 2019, he said racially motivated violent extremists are responsible for the majority of lethal attacks and fatalities perpetrated by domestic terrorists since 20, since 2000. So this is a serious issue. Domestic terrorists are responsible for, for the majority of deaths of fellow Americans. We've seen this in real life, at HBCUs, at Jewish synagogues, at black churches, at Asian American establishments, at Sikh temples. This is a real issue. It requires a real response from Congress. That's what this bill does. And how many times are we going to hear our Republican colleagues attempt this mythology about parents being labeled terrorists as a way to, by the way, distract from their failure to support this very common sense bill to reduce violence of domestic terrorism in our communities, a very real problem, and instead distract you away from the issue by talking about somebody labeling parents as terrorists? It's made up. It doesn't exist. It's a powerful argument because everyone thinks it would be terrible to do that. Of course we do. That's not what anyone has done, other than the wild imagination of some of our colleagues who see the political value. Enough is enough. I urge my colleagues to proudly defeat this amendment, and I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Who seeks recognition?
Mr. Chairman.
For what purposes, gentleman from Kentucky seek recognition?
I move to strike the last word.
Gentlemen's recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield my time to the ranking member from Ohio. I thank the gentleman for yielding. I would just respond, if, if there's not a problem, why'd they apologize? Normally you apologize if you've done something wrong. I don't know. I don't know, too many people just walk up out of the blue and apologize. "We didn't do anything wrong. Everything's wonderful. Nothing bad was going on, but I'm going to apologize." It just doesn't happen. So why'd the school boards apologize? Why did the School Board Association, we now have emails where Viola Garcia, one of the people who signed that initial letter that they've rescinded and apologized for, the National School Board Association communicated for several weeks with the White House before they sent the letter on this subject. Wow, that's interesting. And let's just read, let's just read from the document we got from the whistleblower. As a result of the memo, as a result, the Counterterrorism and Criminal Division created a threat tag, edu officials, to track instances of related threats. We ask that your offices apply the threat tag to investigations and assessments of the threats. Now, if you're investigating, who are you investigating? Do you investigate buildings? Do you investigate puppies? I mean, you investigate people. So who do you think's going to have the label next to their name? People. We're talking about parents at school board meetings, so we're talking about threat tags. I'd like an answer. It'd be real simple to get an answer, to find out, is Mr. Cicilline's right or am I right?
Would the gentleman yield for an answer?
Real simple to get an answer.
Would the gentleman yield for an answer?
If the chairman would bring in the Attorney General and let us ask, how many?
I'll give you a one-word answer.
How many, how many, okay, here's, here's the question. You can answer it if you know it. How many parents right now have a threat tag designation associated with their name? That's the question that matters.
I yield time to the chairman to answer the question.
Thank you. The question was, what are we reacting to? And the answer is threats. Threats to parents, threats to school board members, threats to staff, threats to parents.
So the edu, so in your answer is edu officials, that threat tag will be on threats, not on people. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
You're confident of that?
Yes.
We can get an answer, whether you're right or I'm right, if we talk to the Attorney General. Why don't you, why don't you, why don't you write him a letter and find out, or actually, better, have him come here and tell us? Which is, who's right? Is it a threat tag associated with a threat or a threat tag associated with a person who's being investigated because there's been some threat alleged out there? That's a pretty important question. We could get the answer to that if you'd bring in the Attorney General. That I yield back to my friend from Kentucky.
I'd like to yield time to my friend from North Carolina.
I thank the gentleman. If there's no problem, why don't they disclose? Why don't they tell us? Why didn't they tell us about the edu officials' threat tag? And why don't they tell us how it's being used?
Exactly.
Instead, the members of the majority are reduced to relying upon articles in the leftist media from Reuters and USA Today. A USA Today fact check. Fact check. It, it, and what do they do? USA Today assumes a grave tone, analyzes the evidence and concludes there is no misuse, there is no challenge, no, no tracking of parents, school parents. Why? Because the Attorney General said that he would never do anything like, anything like that. That's the evidence. That's the evidence. That doesn't, the articles from Reuters and USA Today do not establish an answer to the question that is at hand about the use of the edu officials' threat tag, any more than the unanimity among Big Tech and Washington Post and New York Times and CNN and ABC, CBS and NBC, that the Hunter Biden laptop was Russian disinformation made that so. And that's all you've got. That's all you've got. Self-serving articles by media favorable to the Biden administration that doesn't want the Biden administration held to account for contriving this episode. That's what they did. They contrived it. They used the National School Boards Association as a cutout to generate this letter asking that something be done because of threats, when what they meant was they didn't like parents questioning their control. And they were pleased to use intimidation through the machinery of law enforcement on a federal, federal scope, a federal scope, the FBI and the DOJ, to intimidate and stigmatize parents speaking up against the way their children are being indoctrinated. With that, I yield back to the gentleman.
Gentleman yields back. For what purposes, the gentleman from Georgia seek recognition?
Move to strike the last word.
Gentlemen's recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to tender for the record a counterterrorism unit whistleblower DOJ memo, which documents the spike in harassment, intimidation, and threats of violence against school administrators, board members, teachers, and staff since the January 6th violent insurrection on this Capitol by the same forces, by the way, that perpetrated that violence on this Capitol. And I'd also like to tender for the record two articles, both of which document the fact that the FBI is not using threat tags on parents who protest at school board meetings.
Without objection.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to further state that the same forces that unleashed the violence on January 6th are responsible for the violence and threats of violence that are being directed at school board members across the country. This is a phenomenon that is well documented, and HR 350, the Domestic Terrorism Prevention Act of 2021, simply is bipartisan legislation that authorizes the creation of three offices, one each within the Department of Homeland Security, the Department of Justice, and the Federal Bureau of Investigation to monitor, investigate, and prosecute cases of domestic terrorism. And the newly created offices would be required to provide joint biannual reports to Congress assessing the state of domestic terrorism threats with specific focus on white supremacists. And the reason why that is, is because that's where the violence is coming from, the white supremacist movement. And I know my colleagues on the other side of the aisle don't want to hear that, but it is the truth. And instead, they want to continue the politics of aggrievement. In other words, blaming someone for something that's happening to them, the, I mean, it's ridiculous. If it's not Hunter Biden and his laptop, which, by the way, they talk about Hunter Biden's laptop, the laptop has been in their possession for, for three years. They have yet to come forward with any information that would incorporate Hunter Biden in any criminal activity, and that is being investigated.
Will the gentleman yield?
That's being investigated, investigated by the FBI as we speak, but I digress back to HR.
Would the gentleman yield for?
No, I won't. I digress back to HR 350, the Domestic Terrorism Prevention Act of 2021. This is good, common sense legislation to address a threat that is real, is proven, and my colleagues on the other side of the aisle can't seem to appreciate the fact that the forces that they support, which are those that attacked this Capitol on January 6th, are the same forces.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the gentleman's word be taken down.
I don't know what I said.
You, you claimed that these were our people, that the insurrection on January 6th.
Clock will stop while we're doing this. I'm sorry.
The gentleman's, the gentleman's point is a valid one.
What did he, what did he, what are the words?
We could have the transcript read back, but.
What are you saying the words are?
He said that, well, you want to give it?
Mr. Chairman, he was, he said, he wasn't implying even, he said specifically that those of us on this side of the aisle supported and encouraged those who rioted and committed insurrection.
I mean, that's, that's a fact.
I want his words down. I want his words down.
Would the gentleman like to clarify? We can have the words read back. Would the gentleman like to clarify that he's not specifically accused anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the words be, be read back from the transcript to make sure they're accurate.
Words will be read back. You have to go back to the top of his statement.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would be willing to rephrase and say that it's not my intention to accuse my colleagues, my friends on the other side of the aisle of directly supporting the insurrection.
Would that be satisfactory?
If that is what they're objecting to, if that's what they contend that I said.
Let's have the words read back first.
It's going to take 20 minutes? The gentleman has withdrawn his comments. There's no purpose to having it read back. And there are votes on the floor.
Did not withdraw, Mr. Chairman. I'd like a point of clarification that he's withdrawing all his comments, if that's the case.
No, I'm not going to withdraw all of my comments. I will withdraw whatever comment that you take exception to in the interest of moving us forward, but not each and everything that I said. If you could give me something that I said that you object to, I'd be happy to consider withdrawing it.
The gentleman has withdrawn his comments. There's nothing further to discuss.
We've requested that the words be read back.
The gentleman will proceed.
Mr. Chairman, I ask you a point of order.
Gentleman will state his point of order.
We requested the words to be read back. You ordered that the words be read back.
The words were withdrawn. There's no need to read, to read.
The gentleman doesn't even know what words that he's withdrawing.
What words you are objecting to.
That's why we want them read back, so you can know.
You haven't made a specific objection.
Oh, we sure did.
No, you didn't.
Oh, I sure did. I'd like, go ahead and read my words back then. You'll hear a specific objection.
Gentleman restated his objection.
Mr. Chairman, the gentleman said that people on this side of the aisle supported, and I can't remember what the second word he said, those who participated in the riot and insurrection on January 6th. That's what he said.
I will withdraw if I said that, that comment.
Gentleman has withdrawn the comment. There's nothing to be taken down. The gentleman will proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So once again, we have my friends on the other side of the aisle wanting to coddle forces that are participating in the intimidation of school board members across the country.
I move the gentleman's words be taken down.
The reason why they.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
The reason why.
Mr. Chairman.
Intuing motivation constantly is ridiculous.
The reason why I contend that is this very amendment.
What?
I've asked that his words be taken down. He just said that the members on the other side of the aisle want to coddle people, that was his words, coddle people who intimidate school officials around the country.
I will rule that that is within permissible comment in a debate.
So, so the gloves are off.
Gentleman will proceed.
Mr. Chairman.
We will respond in kind.
You already have. The gentleman will proceed.
Mr. Chairman.
The gentleman will proceed.
We're appealing the ruling of the chair. We're appealing the ruling of the chair.
There is no ruling of the chair.
We ruled that it was in, you ruled that it was permissible.
A ruling of the chair can only be in response to a point of order. There was no point of order, and no point of order is in order, and the gentleman will proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So therefore, I rise in opposition to this amendment, which would, which would ban the Federal Bureau of Investigation from creating or utilizing a threat tag of edu officials or any similar threat tag with respect to parents voicing an opinion about the upbringing and education of their children. This is something that is unnecessary. It seeks to tie the hands of the FBI from investigating the escalating threats of violence directed at school board members across the country. This amendment is supported by my friends on the other side, and I'll leave to the imagination of the listeners out there why they support this amendment, but I'll tell you, it's to def- defang the FBI from being able to investigate these complaints. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will yield back.
Time of the gentleman has expired. The gentleman yields back. For what purposes, Mr. Clinton, seek recognition?
Would you speak on the amendment?
Gentleman's recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't tell you how many Tea Party members over the years have told me that they dropped out of politics during the lowest learner rampage for fear of being targeted by the IRS. It wasn't that they had been targeted, only a few people actually or in organizations had actually been targeted, but enough had been to spread fear and to intimidate many from, from participating in their own democracy. It was the threat. It was the possibility. It was the fact that an agency that we loaned the most terrifying powers of government to was coming after individuals because of their temerity to exercise their First Amendment right to petition their government for address of grievance and to exercise their, their freedom of speech. The Democrats say that this provision is superfluous because ordinary citizens exercising their First Amendment rights would never be targeted by the Department of Justice like that. Well, so why not say so? Why not make that graphically clear so that nobody feels intimidated into being silent when their conscience compels them to speak, especially to speak to their elected representatives? I find it disturbing that Democrats would oppose this measure, which simply promises not to do what they swear they won't do. Why not put it in writing? Perception can often be just as compelling as reality, and I think the Democrats' opposition to this simple amendment strongly reinforces that perception and suggests that it might indeed become reality. You know, yield to the ranking member for, or, or.
The gentleman yield.
To the gentleman from California, Mr. Isa.
Mr. Chairman, you know, you and I have served on this committee together for over 20 years. I would hope that the kind of accusations, whether ruled in order or not ruled in order, be discouraged. You and I have, over the years, disagreed on legislation, but never do I remember you're questioning my motives. And I would hope that over, you know, in the cool of the votes that we're going to go take, that we all reset back to, people do disagree, and, and with good purpose. This side of the aisle, of course, is quite upset about the potential targeting of parents, and we've, we've made that clear. And so I, I would hope we all reset, and with your leadership on your side of the aisle, I, I think that's possible, and I certainly hope we would do it. And I thank the gentleman for his time. I thank you for yielding.
The gentleman yields back. I would remind my colleagues that the House Rules of Decorum require members to avoid personalities, in quotes, with other members. This means that members must not impugn the personal motives of other members or speak of other members in a derogatory fashion. To help us observe these rules, I encourage members of this committee to address their remarks to the chair and to refrain from referring to each other in the second person. Votes have been called on the House floor. Therefore, we will stand in recess until immediately following the last vote. The committee stands in recess.
The committee stands in recess.
The committee will come back to order. When we recessed, we were considering an amendment by Mr. Biggs. Who seeks recognition?
Our side, but we don't have anybody at the moment.
If not, the question occurs on the amendment. All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Nay?
No.
No.
The opinion of the chair, the noes have it.
I'd request a roll call vote.
Roll call vote is requested. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Nadler.
No.
Mr. Nadler votes no. Ms. Lofgren. Ms. Jackson Lee. Mr. Cohen. Mr. Johnson of Georgia.
What do you got?
Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Bass.
Hold on, hold on.
Ms. Bass.
Ms. Bass, you're muted.
You want to do what?
I can't, yeah, there you go.
You're muted.
No. No. Oh. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Ms. Bass votes no. Mr. Jeffries. Mr. Cicilline. Mr. Swalwell.
I'm sorry, I'm here. I vote aye.
Mr. Cicilline votes aye. Mr. Swalwell. Mr. Lew. Mr. Raskin.
No.
Mr. Raskin votes no. Ms. Jai Paul.
No. Jai Paul votes no.
Ms. Jai Paul votes no. Ms. Demmings.
No.
Ms. Demmings votes no. Mr. Correa. Mr. Correa.
Mr. Correa is on mute.
No. Correa votes no.
Mr. Correa votes no. Ms. Scanlon.
Scanlon votes no.
Ms. Scanlon votes no. Ms. Garcia.
No.
Ms. Garcia votes no. Mr. Nagus.
No.
Mr. Nagus votes no. Ms. Macbeth.
Macbeth votes no.
Ms. Macbeth votes no. Mr. Stanton. Ms. Dean.
No.
Ms. Dean votes no. Ms. Escobar.
No.
Ms. Escobar votes no. Mr. Jones.
No.
Mr. Jones votes no. Ms. Ross. Ms. Ross votes no. Ms. Bush.
Bush votes no.
Ms. Bush votes no. Mr. Jordan. Mr. Jordan votes yes. Mr. Shabbat. Mr. Gohmert. Mr. Gohmert votes yes. Mr. Issa.
Yes.
Mr. Issa votes yes. Mr. Buck. Mr. Buck votes aye. Mr. Gates.
Aye.
Mr. Gates votes aye. Mr. Johnson of Louisiana. Mr. Johnson of Louisiana votes aye. Mr. Biggs. Mr. Biggs votes aye. Mr. McClintock. Mr. McClintock votes aye. Mr. Stube.
Yes.
Mr. Stube votes yes. Mr. Tiffany.
Aye.
Mr. Tiffany votes aye. Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mr. Massey votes aye. Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mr. Roy votes aye. Mr. Bishop.
Aye.
Mr. Bishop votes aye. Ms. Fishbok.
Aye.
Ms. Fishbok votes aye. Ms. Bartz. Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Bens.
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Bens votes yes. Mr. Fitzgerald votes aye. Mr. Owens.
Madam Clerk, this is David Cicilline. How am I recorded?
Mr. Cicilline, you are recorded as aye.
I should be a no, please.
Madam Clerk. Mr. Chairman, how am I record? Mr. Chairman, how am I recorded?
Mr. Jeffries, you are not recorded.
Mr. Jeffries votes no.
Mr. Jeffries votes no.
How am I recorded?
Ms. Lofgren, you are not recorded.
Lofgren votes no.
Ms. Lofgren.
Jackson Lee, how am I recorded?
Ms. Jackson Lee, you are not recorded.
Jackson Lee votes no.
Ms. Jackson Lee votes no.
Mr. Chairman, how am I recorded?
Mr. Deutsch, you are not recorded.
No.
Is Mr. Shabbat, am I recorded?
Mr. Shabbat, you are not recorded.
Aye.
Mr. Shabbat votes aye.
This is Stanton, how I recorded?
Mr. Stanton, you are not recorded.
Yeah.
Stanton votes no.
How is Swalwell recorded?
Mr. Swalwell, you are not recorded.
No.
Mr. Swalwell votes no.
Madam Clerk, Johnson. How am I recorded?
Mr. Johnson of Georgia, you are not recorded.
Vote no.
Mr. Johnson of Georgia votes no.
How is Ted Lew recorded?
Mr. Lew, you are not recorded.
I vote no.
Mr. Lew votes no.
How is Bartz recorded?
Ms. Bartz, you are not recorded.
Bartz votes yes.
How is Mr. Raskin recorded?
Mr. Raskin is recorded as no.
Are there any other members who wish to vote who haven't voted yet? Clerk will report.
Mr. Chairman, there are 18 ayes and 24 nos.
The amendment is not agreed to. Are there any further amendments to the amendment in nature of a substitute?
Mr. Chairman.
Who seeks recognition?
Bishop.
For what purposes, Mr. Bishop, seek recognition?
I have an amendment at the desk.
Clerk will report the amendment.
Reserve a point of order.
Point of order is reserved.
Amendment to the amendment in the nature of a substitute to H.R. 350 offered by Mr. Bishop of North Carolina, page 5, line 24, insert "and the number of parents tagged with threat tag, EDU officials by the Federal Bureau of Investigation."
The amendment will be considered as read. The gentleman is recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This comes at the issue that we've been debating on the prior amendment by Mr. Biggs in a different way. So what Mr. Biggs proposed that seemed objectionable to the majority was to prevent funds from being used by the FBI to create or utilize the EDU officials tag against parents voicing an opinion. And that, okay, so that was no-go, but this does it in a way that ought to be even less offensive or problematic for the majority. And it simply says, this bill, if we can kind of go back to it, concerning domestic terrorism, especially white supremacist domestic terrorism threats, it codifies the FBI's mechanisms to monitor and report specifically on that, reporting to Congress biannually. And so all this amendment does is, right below the sub-paragraphs specifying the content of that amendment, it asks simply that the FBI and DHS and Department of Justice will report the number of parents who are tagged with the threat tag, EDU officials, by the FBI or any similar threat tag, applied to parents voicing an opinion about the upbringing and education of their children. We had some exchanges in debating the prior amendment by those who said this isn't occurring. You didn't want to interfere with the use of the EDU officials threat tag, so you didn't want to defund that. But now we're on to something that's much simpler, and it just simply says, tell us. We don't want to have to rely on conclusory statements of fact-checkers at USA Today or Reuters. We know that we have a situation where the United States Attorney from the state of Washington appeared before us, and I asked him the questions. When he had his meetings with local law enforcement and other leaders, did he have a set of threats that he imparted to them? He said no. Did they impart threats to him that they knew? And he said no, he saw no threats that would justify or warrant a nationwide scope of action in his case, out in the state of Washington. We haven't, when the Attorney General was here originally back in October of last year, he could not articulate specific events, specific threats that warranted a nationwide crackdown by the FBI against parents of schoolchildren. And so since we're going to be asking for reporting on domestic terrorism threats, and of course, as far as the School Boards Association was concerned, parents, they thought that was an example of domestic terrorism. So at least, since it's a threat tag set up in a terrorism database, could we add to the report the requirement that we see the information about how many, the number of parents, they could put in a big fat zero if there's nothing to it, but the number of parents who have been tagged with that domestic terrorism threat tag for voicing opinion about the upbringing and education of their children? And with that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
I recognize myself in opposition to the amendment. The amendment is both irrelevant and impossible. It demands that you name the number of parents tagged with the threat tag. Number one, people who are identified as threats, which is what you were referring to as threat tags, may or may not be parents. There's no way of knowing whether they are parents or not, number one. And number two, the number And number two, the number will vary by the day. So the amendment simply is impossible, and on that grounds, I would oppose it.
Chairman?
For what purposes, the gentleman seek recognition?
I withdraw my point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Point of order is withdrawn. I stated my opposition. I yield back.
Mr. Chairman, would you yield to a question?
I've already yielded back. Who seeks recognition? Mr. Jordan? What purposes, Mr. Jordan?
Strike the last word.
Gentleman's recognized.
You said, there's no way of knowing. How do you know? We just had a debate hour or so ago, and you said that parents are tagged. You said it's the investigation.
I'll answer your question. You just asked me a question. How do you know?
Okay.
The reports that are generated are the number of threats. There is no way of knowing whether the person who made the threat or the subject who made the threat is a parent. That's not reported.
Gentleman, you? I would, yeah, I'll yield to the gentleman from North Carolina. Just a quick question, which I'd pose if it would fix the concern of the chairman. We could say individuals as opposed to parents, if that's the concern. But again, the number of individuals who've been assigned that threat tag for those reasons would be the inquiry. Yeah, and that was my point. An hour or so ago, it seemed to me the argument from the chairman was, no name would be associated with the EDU official tag. It would be tagged to an investigation. And I said, well, who are you investigating? You investigate people. So there's going to be some name associated with it. My gut tells me some of those are going to be parents. Maybe not, maybe someone else. But usually, when you got concerns with school board matters, it's parents showing up to talk about the concerns they have regarding the education of their child. So to say it's not a parent, I don't think you make that statement either. There's going to be someone's name associated with it. That's what we're asking to be reported. And the debate we had a couple hours ago, it seems we can get an answer to that if this amendment is added to the legislation. There's all kinds of other reporting requirements in the legislation. Why not report on a fundamental question about the concern we have, which is moms and dads being hit with this specific designation? Be happy to yield to the gentleman from Wisconsin.
Yeah, thank you. So I would just ask a question of the gentleman from North Carolina. It seems like, I mean, should we be open to amending the bill based on what I'm hearing from the chairman? That I'm hearing the words "impossible to know." Well, it seems to me it should be possible to know if we just are collecting, if the FBI is correcting the information, if they're collecting that information.
If the gentleman from Ohio, would you? Happy to yield to the gentleman from North Carolina. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. You know, I think what I was probing for is, is there any language that we could modify that would satisfy the majority? If there's any comedy, any inclination at all to address the concern, again, we know the threat tags out there. We know that it had to come forward from a whistleblower. We know that it was something contrived with the National Association of School Boards because they didn't like parents protesting. And so it would be a simple thing to report on. And again, the point is to express the willingness to change the language in a way that would be satisfactory to the majority. But otherwise, I do think the question is whether parents are being threat tagged. Any yield back? Yeah, and I would just say, I do think there's a way of knowing. Your language seems to be that particular, the solution, and if it needs amended, fine. And if the Democrats don't want to go there, I think it raises an even bigger question. Why don't they? Why don't they want to fix it? Why don't they want to know? I would love to know how many individuals, most likely being parents, have this designation associated with their name, what that number is, who they are, what the circumstances are. I think that's relevant information for the committee. Would be happy to yield to the gentleman. Mr. Jordan, if you yield. Yeah, I'll yield to the gentleman from North Carolina. Then I'll come to Andy. I thank the gentleman. And that's sort of right at the heart of it. If there's, again, we've been told that this is imagination, that it's poll-driven scandal-mongering. Well, why not take the slightest, easiest expedient to get rid of it, to address it? If there's nothing to be concerned about, why not just put the clause in there that would say, "Report on this," and then we'll get a number. It'll come back, and it'll be zero. It seems like it would work in the favor of those who at least ostensibly resist this on the grounds there's nothing to it. It does happen to be the case, though, those same folks who are resisting on the grounds there's nothing to it have not brought the Attorney General back to ask questions, have not been interested in following up the information that had to come forward only through the voluntary forthcoming of a FBI whistleblower, do not seem to be concerned about the very oddity of having an EDU official, a threat tag in the domestic terrorism database being set up about controversies over school boards. I yield back to the gentleman. Thank you, Tim. I yield back. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to strike the last word.
I'd like to strike the last word.
Gentleman's recognized.
And yield to the chairman.
I thank the gentlelady. If the minority will agree to withdraw this amendment and other subsequent amendments and to get to a vote on this bill, we will be willing to work with the minority to capture this information in the context of this report.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to entertain a specific proposal to modify this amendment. I certainly am not in position to speak to other people's amendments.
We can't do that right now. We'll be happy to work with you to figure out a way to capture this information in the context of this report.
Mr. Chairman, I decline to withdraw the amendment.
Okay. And I yield to the gentlelady from Texas, Ms. Jackson Lee.
Very briefly, I will take a moment to say to my friends on a personal note, I don't concede the crisis that you're trying to achieve, but I do respect the fact that you have a particular perspective. As I read the language of this section, it has to do with the actors, the first report and analysis of the incidents or attempted incidents of domestic terrorism that occur in the United States, including white supremacist-related incidents or attempted incidents. So it has a certain framework. Unless you want to include parents in that category, there is no definitive attack on parents for going to a school board meeting or talking to their teachers. If they're acting in a way, talking to their children's teachers, they're acting in a way that characterizes the incidences that's generated these attacks, then they come under the broad umbrella.
Would the gentlelady yield?
Not at this time. They come under the broad umbrella, if that is even the case. And so I make the argument is that we're trying to classify and get information on entities and individuals not yet classified, that we have proven that the FBI doesn't have any purposeful effort dealing with this. And the only desire that they have is to protect elected officials and/or teachers if something occurs that would be threatening to their life or the quality of life. So I would make the point that I would hope maybe you would take up the chairman's offer that we can explore this together to be reasonable and to respond to an aspect of what you're suggesting, but it really, at this point, does not fit because there is no purposeful effort on behalf of the FBI that you all can document. With that, I yield to Ms. Lofgren.
And reclaim my time. I'll yield back to the remaining time.
For what purposes, Mr. Biggs seek recognition?
Move, strike, last word.
Gentleman's recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate some of the offers that have been put out there. It's just, I just want to clarify a couple things. I mean, when the chair said it's impossible to determine if somebody's a parent or not a parent, that's really quite an interesting statement. We're asking for a report on an assessment of domestic terrorist threats posed by white supremacists and neo-Nazis. Now, in order to determine that somebody is a white supremacist and neo-Nazi, the FBI is going to have to gather evidence or indicia. It may be documentary evidence, it may be photographic evidence, it may be video evidence, it may be literature, it may be other paraphernalia that is indicative of someone who you would characterize as a white supremacist or a neo-Nazi. Similarly, one would anticipate that this same crackerjack investigative team of the FBI would be able to determine if, through various indicia, various evidence, maybe it's documentary, photographic, video, literature, oral testimony. Are you a parent of someone who's in this school district? Why, yes, I am. That might be an indicator that somebody is a parent. It is not impossible, Mr. Chairman. And since this aspect that the gentleman from North Carolina is getting at is merely asking for reporting, you would assume that the police, the federal police apparatus could discern as clearly that someone is a parent as we believe that they can, someone is a white supremacist neo-Nazi, or anything else that pertains to this bill or any other federal designation. And with that, I will yield to the gentleman from Ohio.
I thank the gentleman for yielding. Again, just remember, this is simply a reporting amendment. There's all kinds of reporting in the legislation. And don't forget, the catalyst for all this had some reporting in it. The initial School Boards Association letter cited 24 incidents where they said, these are the 24 examples that they had in their letter that went to the Attorney General, and he said was the basis for his memorandum, setting this whole process in motion. And of those 24, 20 were not even violent in any way, shape, or form, and the four that could be categorized as violent, one was the situation in Virginia, where I think any dad would have probably taken the action that that father took at that particular meeting. So there was reporting there that was way out of line for what the Justice Department is now undertaking and what they're doing. So we're simply saying, on the other end, what's happening now? Remember, and the reporting in that initial letter, the School Boards Association has since apologized for the letter, and that's what started it all. So the gentleman from North Carolina has a simple amendment. Tell us what's going on. Where is this designation, this label, this threat tag? Who's it being assigned to? How's it being done? We want to know. Because we know what started it all was not presented in an accurate fashion whatsoever, and that was the catalyst for it all. So we kind of like to know what's, and I think frankly, the American people, and certainly moms and dads, would like to know. Thank the gentleman for yielding. We yield back.
Thank you. Now I'll yield to the gentleman from North Carolina.
I thank the gentleman from Arizona, and to a couple points. Again, the question is, what is the objection to letting this be disclosed? Even the details of how this is being used? And I have some sensitivity to the point made by the gentlelady from Texas about the language, you know, putting this language in here and the number of parents tagged with the threat tag, EDU officials, into this provision about reporting on domestic terrorism. But again, remember, the National School Boards Association letter said this should be characterized as domestic terrorism. That's what they really recognized they had to apologize for. And of course, what we're talking about is a tag that is used in a counterterrorism database by the counterterrorism division of the FBI. I don't know where else you would put it, other than asking for reporting about incidents of domestic terrorism that are being investigated or recorded by the FBI. Hence, makes all the sense in the world to me. Again, I'd be, and I'm perfectly glad to accept alternative ways to express it, but I don't want to let the issue go and not be addressed at all. Hence, I'm not willing to withdraw the amendment. Now I yield back.
The gentleman yields back. For what purposes, the gentleman from?
I have unanimous consent, if I could, please. Just two. Just two for a change, Mr. Chairman.
The gentleman will proceed.
Yeah, one is the New York Times article about FBI threat tagging, and another is from Yahoo.com, Terry McAuliffe, "Parents Don't Know."
That objection. For what purposes, the gentleman from Maryland seek recognition?
Move, strike, last word. Just want to comment on the amendment.
Gentleman's recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel like we've entered Alice in Wonderland here, or Malice in Blunderland. We're talking about a non-issue. Does anybody really think that the FBI or the Department of Justice are out investigating parents for participating in school board meetings or speaking about their kids' education? We're talking about hundreds of millions, or certainly tens of millions of people in the country, Democrats, there are more Democratic parents than Republican parents, because there's a lot more Democrats than Republicans, independents, people across the board. Do people think that that's really happening? But let me talk about a real issue, as long as we're on the subject of domestic terrorism. January the 6th, the gentleman from Ohio said, "Simple amendment. Just tell us what's going on. Just tell us what's going on, all right?" Well, on January the 6th, there was the worst domestic violence unleashed against the Capitol of the United States, against the Congress of the United States, since the War of 1812, which was a foreign power. So really, the worst domestic violence unleashed against Congress to try to overthrow our government. And we hear from our colleagues across the aisle 10 times more, 100 times more, 1,000 times more about this issue that nobody can even understand, that was over, that somebody apologized for many months ago. But are they upset about real domestic violence and terror? A number of Republicans called it domestic terrorism within a couple of days before Donald Trump whipped everybody back into line, and they don't call it domestic terrorism anymore. So I wonder what they consider a greater threat to the future of our democracy? The Proud Boys, the Oath Keepers, the Aryan Nations, the militia groups that unleashed their violent fury on our police officers? Who's a greater threat to law enforcement today? Is it the forces that attacked us on January 6th and broke our officers' jaws and necks and vertebrae, and one officer lost three fingers, inflicting traumatic brain injuries on our officers, causing heart attacks and strokes, leaving dozens of our officers with post-traumatic stress syndrome? Or is it something that happened with the memo that the National School Board Association issued many months ago that they apologized for a couple days later? I haven't heard an apology from the Oath Keepers, or the Proud Boys, or the militia groups, or the Aryan Nations, or Donald Trump, but they're not concerned about that? And so there was a bipartisan agreement to create an independent 9/11-style commission to investigate the events and the causes behind them of January 6th, this violent assault on American democracy. And the Republicans said, "We will only participate if it's an outside commission with five Republicans and five Democrats and equal subpoena power." And so Congressman Bennie Thompson agreed with John Katko, who was the emissary of Kevin McCarthy. "We will have a 9/11-style commission. Why? Just tell us what's going on. Let's just get the facts of the matter." And you know what happened? Donald Trump vetoed it. Donald Trump said he didn't want any investigation at all. And then suddenly, Kevin McCarthy pulled the plug on his own proposal, and all of the Republicans followed in line. Yes, they did, all of them. They followed in line, except for a handful of brave ones who said with John Katko, "We've got to have a commission. We've got to stick to our deal, and we've got to get to the truth of this." But the rest of them said, "We want to cover it up. Don't tell us what's going on." And so now we have a committee that is finding out what's going on, and all of this stuff about the National School Board Association and a memo that they apologized for and was withdrawn and all, all of this is a massive effort to distract the American people from the reality of what just took place. For the first time in American history, there was a violent interruption of the House and the Senate meeting in joint session the first week of January after a presidential election to count Electoral College votes. And they chanted "Hail Mike Pence," and they wanted to assassinate Nancy Pelosi. And a half a dozen people died in that attack. A hundred officers were wounded. And instead, we hear about some memo relating to the National School Board Association from months ago. So please, like, save us this absurd distraction from the business of America. I mean, I consider it absolute Alice in Wonderland stuff that's going on here. Who's seeking recognition? I'm sorry? I will yield my remaining time.
The gentleman's time has expired. For what purposes, Mr. Gohmert seek recognition?
Strike the last word.
Gentleman's recognized.
Yeah, I very much appreciated a friend from Maryland's creative recreation of what went on in January of last year and since. For him to make the statement that basically after the president vetoed the bipartisan commission, then... And in fact, it was after the Speaker of the House set up a commission in a procedure, a method that is unheard of in congressional history, where she would not allow the people, the Republicans, the opposing party people on the commission, struck them, including our own ranking member, that we realized that this was not about to be a fair commission. And for anyone to say that Republicans, and this was the quote I heard, "Republicans said, 'We want to cover it up,'" talking about January 6th, "since we cannot attribute any false motivation without violating the rules," let me just say, the gentleman from Maryland is so misinformed about what happened, to say that Republicans said, "We want to cover this up," is outrageous. And since we can't attribute improper motives, it is so misinformed, it makes me wonder how much else the gentleman from Maryland has said that is terribly misinformed. Look, this was not a bipartisan commission. It was a search to blame Republicans, and that became very clear. So let me just say, when it comes to the domestic terrorism, we did want a commission to investigate January 6th. I wanted the commission to find out why Capitol policemen told me the night of January 5th, they had just had a briefing that there could be violence, not so much from the Trump supporters, but from people that were coming, wearing red, acting like Trump supporters, and wearing MAGA and this kind of thing. I wanted an investigation into all of it. But the Speaker wanted it restricted so that it could only be a one-sided investigation of people that hated the Republican Party. And that's the two people that have and are by their name that were on there. So let's be serious. Let's get back to this bill and why there is a need. The fact that the gentleman from Maryland would even say that Republicans said, "We want to cover up," is an indication of why it is so important that we have a bill here that will accurately report who the potential terrorists are, or who they are. And so I support the gentleman's amendment. I think it is critical, especially in view of the comments that have been made. And I would yield to my friend from Ohio.
I think the gentleman for you, and the gentleman from Maryland used the word apology. The apology the American people would like to hear is, why was it Big Tech, Big Media, and Democrats all colluding to keep a story from the American people in the days before our most important election? We'd like an apology there. If we're going to talk about apologies, I mean, we had two stories last Wednesday from the Washington Post that what we were told last fall about Russian disinformation was baloney. The Washington, don't take Republicans' word for it, the Washington Post did two stories, one at 11:00 AM, one at 11:04 AM, two eight-page stories, four minutes apart, saying the laptop was real, the eyewitness was real, the emails were real, and yet, no apology coming there, keeping some critical information from the electorate in the run-up to the presidential election. The gentleman from Maryland said it was silly propaganda. That's what he called that. I call that not letting the American people have important information when we're getting ready to decide who's going to be the president of our country.
Time of the gentleman has expired. Who else seeks recognition? Who seeks recognition? For what purpose does Mr. Tiffany seek recognition?
We'll just strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
Thank you. So we heard that this was the worst incident of violence at the United States Capitol since 1812, I think was the quote. Just a quick search here online. "Three Sticks of Dynamite, July 2, 1915. Puerto Rican nationalists attacked Congress March 1, 1954." Largely lost from public memory now, the push for nationhood from Puerto Rico, and the attack on Congress at that point. So no one justifies any attack on Congress, but to say that this is the worst one since 1812, I think some of these other events have been memory-holed. You know, what I believe is at the heart of this amendment is the great concern with credibility in regards to the Department of Justice and the FBI, in particular, the leadership. We've certainly heard from the rank and file, a lot of good people work for those organizations yet. But there's a real concern with credibility. And one of the things that we're attempting to do here is rebuild the credibility of this agency, because a lot of people, there's not a lot of trust. And especially after what happened with the Russia collusion hoax and other things like that. And we're sure hoping that Mr. Durham gets to the bottom of this, because it's really important to help rebuild the credibility. And I would just ask the question of the gentleman from North Carolina. What I understand from this amendment, you're simply asking if the threat tag "edu officials" appear, how many people are being identified with that threat tag? Am I correct in reading that?
Thank the gentleman for yielding. And to answer your question, it is absolutely that simple. And as my comments earlier, I've invited modification to the language to the extent someone could misconstrue it, or perfect the language in some way that would alleviate any concerns about it. And if I may, to the gentleman from Wisconsin, the point you've posed about the reputation of the agency, what the American people are seeing time and time and time again is facts that are not disclosed for years. Remember that the Office of Special Counsel, John Durham, what he is pursuing now, what is being revealed now, are about events that were occurring in 2016 and 2017, about which not one person has been held to account in any significant way. And so we need a culture change, and the culture change really ought to begin here. If the fascination with domestic terrorism threat makes appropriate completely modifying the FBI's organization and reporting regime, and imposing new reporting regimes, let's at least get this episode covered also. But instead, it is yet another step, it appears, to sweep it under the rug, which leaves the American people to discern whether or not there are two standards of justice, whether justice in the United States is being politicized. And there's every indication of that, that this is an episode in which very somber, significant instruments of federal criminal justice are being exploited and politicized against political enemies. And with that, I yield back to the gentleman from Wisconsin.
Yeah, if I could ask a question a little bit further here, the gentleman from North Carolina. We probably would not have to see this amendment if we didn't see some people that had compromised the agency. And without that culture change, and I would say to you, Mr. Chairman, that we can help make that happen. And I think that's the interest that this amendment is put forward in good faith. And when you're saying it's impossible to know these parents, we do think it's possible to know. But I would say to the gentleman, North Carolina, in closing, don't you think that it's part of what's going on here, is the committee is saying, "We can help foster this culture change that needs to happen"?
Absolutely. It ought to be led from here. And we could start that today, right now, on this amendment. Thank the gentleman.
I yield back, Mr. Chairman. Gentleman yields back. Who seeks recognition? For what purpose does Mr. Roy seek recognition?
Strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
So I note that this piece of legislation, as I understand it, right, the purpose is to authorize dedicated domestic terrorism offices within the Department of Homeland Security, the Department of Justice, and the Federal Bureau of Investigation to analyze and monitor domestic terrorist activity, and require the federal government to take steps to prevent domestic terrorism. Now, that seems, may seem innocuous to some. I don't find it to be particularly innocuous when you're talking about the power of the federal government, and talking about the offices to monitor domestic terrorist activity. That already raises red flags for me, no matter what the purpose is, no matter who is being targeted. And so when I go back, and I've mentioned this before, and I won't belabor it, but it does merit repetition, that at the center of this whole controversy, starting going back to the National School Board Association's memo, was that Scott Smith of Loudoun County, who was 48 years old, about my age, I'm 49, he's the father of a girl who was sexually assaulted, this story that I'm pulling back up to remind myself, says allegedly, but we now know, has been confirmed, conviction, sexually assaulted in a Virginia school bathroom in Loudoun County, which is where I went to high school, Loudoun Valley High School. And that Scott was at this school board event subsequently to his daughter being assaulted. And his wife is yelling, quote, "My child was raped at school, and this is what happened." And there's a picture that was fairly famously spread around the internet of Mr. Smith being wrestled to the ground. Now, Mr. Smith is at a school board meeting because his daughter was raped. And he's asking the school board, and frankly, he was being a little more polite than Congressman Roy would have been, I assure you. If my daughter was raped, and I was in front of the school board, he was asking to be heard. And then his name ends up at the center of an effort by the National School Board Association to have the FBI investigating terrorist, domestic terrorist activity. So this isn't, you know, as some might say, oh, well, you guys are just stalling, or trying to delay, or offer amendments for show, or have some political show vote, or... This is an amendment, or a bill, I'm sorry, a piece of legislation that would expand the power of the Federal Bureau of Investigation to analyze and monitor domestic terrorist activity. And we know, then through whistleblowers, and we've got the documentation from the whistleblowers, that we've got this edu official tag. And now all we simply want to do, in this amendment, since the majority refused to accept Mr. Biggs' amendment, to say, "Wait, let's not target parents," all we're trying to do right now is say, "Can we at least know who's being targeted?" And to track the use of the edu official tag. Now, so I want everybody in America to understand, the United States House of Representatives Judiciary Committee wants to empower the FBI, Homeland Security, to empower going after Americans, to monitor their activity in America, monitor Americans. And we know that they've been doing so, targeting parents. And again, the kind of parent we're talking about is Mr. Smith, whom I've come to know. And that was the epicenter of starting this whole thing, of, quote, "threats to school boards," that a father wanted to dare question a school board about what happened to his daughter in a bathroom in the school he pays taxes to, and just wants to know that his daughter is safe. And do my colleagues on the other side of the aisle think that's okay? My colleagues on the other side of the aisle think, "Oh, let's just sweep that aside"? And that we shouldn't be concerned about the power of the government tracking citizens? Tracking Americans based on the fact that they show up to a school board to demand security for their daughter? That's where we are? I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Who else seeks recognition? In that case, the question occurs on the amendment. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the nays have it.
Recorded vote, Mr. Chairman.
Recorded vote is requested. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Nadler.
No.
Mr. Nadler votes no. Ms. Lofgren?
No.
Ms. Lofgren votes no.
All members mute their, all members mute their microphones while we have the roll call.
Ms. Jackson Lee votes no.
No. Did you get me?
Ms. Jackson Lee votes no. Mr. Cohen?
I. Yes. Yes, I concur.
Mr. Cohen votes yes.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson of Georgia?
Vote aye.
Mr. Johnson of Georgia votes aye.
I want to remind members, we're voting on the Biggs amendment.
No. I change my vote to no.
I'd like to change my vote to no. This is Hank Johnson.
Mr. Cohen votes no. Mr. Johnson of Georgia votes no. Mr. Deutsch?
No.
Mr. Deutsch votes no. Ms. Bass?
Bass votes no.
Ms. Bass votes no. Mr. Jeffries? Mr. Cicilline? Mr. Cicilline votes no. Mr. Swalwell?
No.
Mr. Swalwell votes no. Mr. Lou?
No.
Mr. Lou votes no. Mr. Raskin?
No.
Mr. Raskin votes no. Ms. Dryipal?
No.
Ms. Dryipal votes no. Ms. Demmings?
No.
Ms. Demmings votes no. Ms. Scanlon? Ms. Garcia?
No.
Ms. Garcia votes no. Mr. Nagus?
No.
Mr. Nagus votes no. Ms. Macbeth?
Macbeth votes no.
Ms. Macbeth votes no. Mr. Stanton?
No.
Mr. Stanton votes no. Ms. Escobar?
No.
Ms. Escobar votes no. Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Jones votes no. Ms. Ross? Ms. Ross votes no. Ms. Bush?
Bush votes no.
Ms. Bush votes no. Mr. Jordan? Mr. Jordan votes yes. Mr. Shabbat?
Yes.
Mr. Shabbat votes yes. Mr. Gohmert?
Very efficient, Eric.
Mr. Gohmert votes aye. Mr. Issa?
Aye.
Mr. Issa votes aye. Mr. Buck? Mr. Buck votes aye. Mr. Gates? Mr. Gates votes aye. Mr. Johnson of Louisiana? Mr. Biggs? Mr. Biggs votes aye. Mr. McClintock? Mr. McClintock votes aye. Mr. Stube? Mr. Stube votes yes. Mr. Tiffany?
Aye.
Mr. Tiffany votes aye. Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mr. Massey votes aye. Mr. Roy?
Aye.
Mr. Roy votes aye. Mr. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Bishop votes aye. Ms. Fishbach?
Aye.
Ms. Fishbach votes aye. Ms. Spartz?
Spartz, yes.
Ms. Spartz votes yes. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald votes aye. Mr. Benz? Mr. Benz votes yes.
How is Mr. Jeffries recorded?
Mr. Jeffries, you are not recorded. Mr. Jeffries votes no. Ms. Dean, you are not recorded. Ms. Dean votes no.
Are there any other members who have not been recorded who wish to be recorded? to be recorded? The clerk will report.
Mr. Chairman, there are 17 ayes and 23 nos.
The amendment is not agreed to. Are there any further amendments to the amendment in nature of a substitute? For what purpose does Mr. Stube seek recognition?
I have an amendment at the desk, Mr. Chairman.
Clerk will report the amendment.
I reserve a point of order.
Point of order is reserved.
Amendment to the amendment in the nature of a substitute to H.R. 350 offered by Mr. Stube of Florida, page five, beginning on line 14, strike white supremacists and neo-Nazis and insert neo-Nazis, white supremacists, Antifa, Black Lives Matter, and radicalized social justice organizations, page five, beginning on line 15, strike white-
The amendment will be considered as read. The gentleman is recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My amendment would ensure that the most dangerous left-wing groups in this country are included in the enhanced reporting, training, and inter-agency cooperation portions of this bill. This amendment would include Antifa, Black Lives Matter, and radicalized social justice groups alongside neo-Nazis and white supremacists for purpose of reporting in Section 3, training in Section 4, and the inter-agency task force in Section 5 of the bill. Radicalized groups like Antifa and BLM have terrorized this country for years now. The summer of 2020 saw cities under siege, murders, and other unspeakable acts committed by these groups. On June 2nd, 2020, retired police officer David Dorn was brutally murdered by BLM rioters. In Seattle in 2020, rapes and murders occurred inside the Antifa-dominated chop zone. Last October, a violent left-wing mob swarmed the Department of Interior and fought their way inside a federal building. And just last month, BLM worked to free a cold-blooded attempted assassin in Kentucky, a, quote, "social justice activist," attempted to assassinate a mayoral candidate in Louisville. And what did BML do? They fought to free their violent comrade. Perhaps most relevant to this amendment, these groups have made eliminating the police a mission. Some have disingenuously called this reimagining the police, but in fact, the goal is defunding and elimination. BLM and Antifa have openly targeted law enforcement, and we should be very concerned about their aims to infiltrate law enforcement and the uniform service. This amendment would protect against that threat. A lot has changed since the last time this committee considered this bill. We have seen what happens when federal law enforcement overreaches, as they have done in response to January 6th and with parents at school board meetings. There are countless reasons to oppose the underlying bill, and I do, but at least this amendment would make some positive change. With this amendment, federal law enforcement would be empowered to protect Americans from the violent far-left, and I urge my colleagues to support my amendment.
I withdraw my point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Point of order is withdrawn. Gentleman has yielded back. I recognize myself in opposition to the amendment. In 2017, the FBI used the moniker "Black Identity Extremism," B.I.E., to describe six unrelated attacks on law enforcement between 2014 and 2017. A 2019 Intercept analysis found only one federal prosecution related to B.I.E. since 2001, while there had been 268 federal prosecutions of right-wing extremists in the same time period. The FBI, DHS, and DOJ have acknowledged that the largest threat within the RMVE category is white supremacists. The FBI's 2017 B.I.E. report was wrong-headed, and I think my colleagues across the aisle know that. If anything, the report is an excellent example of what can happen when we're looking in the wrong direction. A week after the FBI B.I.E. report was released, white supremacists held a deadly rally in Charlottesville, Virginia. In the past 20 years, only one B.I.E. has been prosecuted by the federal government, just one. Yet here we are again, talking about a buggy man that exists solely in the minds of my colleagues across the aisle and the people they frighten into believing them. Domestic terrorism, no matter its origin, is unwelcome in this country, and I'd like to hear my colleagues say the same. Amendments based on the idea that Black Lives Matter protesters are the real threat, engaging the legal right to peacefully protest is inherently American act. Those who seek to paint peaceful protest as violence simply because of the message those protesters are bringing are quite frankly, part of the problem. Domestic terrorism is entirely different from voices peacefully crying out for change. In fact, far-right domestic terrorists, which pose the greatest threat to Americans today, seek to attack minorities and undermine minority institutions, which I'd like to remind my colleagues across the aisle is why we're sitting here today. So, let's get back to the real problem. I yield back. For what purposes does Mr. Tiffany seek recognition?
Strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
I may defer to the gentleman from Florida who authored this, but you're, the description you just gave is inaccurate. I mean, read the document here, I mean, page 12, line 2, "strike white supremacists and neo-Nazi and insert neo-Nazi, white supremacist, Antifa, Black Lives Matter, and radicalized social justice organization." He put them all in there. They're all in there in this amendment. Am I correct? Gentleman from Florida? Yes. So, I, um, don't try to misdirect here, because the gentleman from Florida's amendment is actually quite fair and is more comprehensive to make sure what most American people believe. They want rioting and the crime in our cities to stop. They don't care what color the person is, they just want it to stop. I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Who seeks recognition? For what purposes does Mr. Gates seek recognition?
I move to strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank my colleague from Florida for his leadership. I know how well he is thought of, particularly by our law enforcement community, and I appreciate what he's done with the amendment to try to really vet through some inconsistencies in the application of law to groups that are deemed right-wing versus left-wing. I am not going to be able to support the amendment though, because I really think the biggest problem we face is the inward turning of these national security authorities against our own people for any reason, whether they're right-wing or left-wing. I've read and become very concerned about the FBI and the DOJ's targeting of, you know, groups like Marcus Garvey's group, or Martin Luther King Jr.'s group, or the people around Malcolm X, because at the time, the FBI was a pretty explicitly racist organization. And now that the FBI is no longer a right-wing organization, but it's a left-wing organization, I don't think that our standards on the utilization of these authorities should change. So, again, I very much appreciate what my colleague from Florida is doing, and I think he makes a very valid point in the introduction of the amendment, but I won't be voting for it for those reasons.
Would the gentleman yield for a question?
I'm going to yield to my colleague from Ohio.
All right. I think the gentleman for yielding, and just take a few minutes, he mentioned, used the term inward-looking. Well, just so happens today, 7:42 a.m. Eastern Time, The Washington Post had a story that says, "The FBI is spending millions on social media tracking software." Let me just read from this, this story, and I'd be happy to enter in the record. "The FBI has contracted for 5,000 licenses to use BabbelX's software made by Babbel Street that lets users search social media sites within a geographic area and other parameters. The contract began on March 30th and is worth as much as $27 million." They're going to be surveilling anybody and everybody in some specified area, not, again, not Matt Gaetz, not Jim Jordan, not Donald Trump, not Republicans. The Washington Post, 7 o'clock this morning, a story that's all about inward-looking, the term the gentleman just, just talked about. I would yield back to the gentleman from Florida.
I appreciate that, and, you know, if the FBI is seeking to scrape social media information, they may be coming less ambitious when compared to the capabilities that we've seen from the Pegasus system. Under Mr. Massey's questioning of the FBI Cyber Chief recently, the FBI Cyber Chief wants us to believe that they took a $5 million test drive on software that has been used internationally by state and non-state actors to target, wait for it, politicians, people in the media, cultural leaders. And so, like, the FBI is using some of the scariest software in the world that doesn't even require a click or any action by the user. It just penetrates inside your cellphone, your messages, your contents. And so, it could mark, Pegasus could mark the end of spearfishing as a, as a capability or as a tactic from our adversaries because it is, it is so able to get in the phone. So, we're going to find out whether or not the FBI really is going to maintain behind closed doors that this was a test drive, that they paid $5 million bucks just in, in a, to satisfy their sense of wonderment and curiosity. And I'm grateful that Mr. Lou on the committee as well has insisted that that be bipartisan, and that we, we join together to stop these potential infringements on liberties. I worry that the underlying legislation here, that Mr. Stube is admirably trying to improve, it really gaslights the continued targeting of Americans for purposes of politics. And we've seen it enough, we've seen it repeatedly, we've seen the Attorney General share information with us that we cannot rely on. Even he cannot rely on some of the information anymore because it has been rescinded. And, but I will not be supporting the amendment because I do not believe that we should do this to our fellow Americans, whether they're members of Antifa, Black Lives Matter, or some other group that's deemed a thought crime or, you know, crime of bad politics in today's ethic. I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Who else seeks recognition?
Mr. Chairman.
What purpose does Mr. Roy seek recognition? What, what purpose does Mr. Bishop seek recognition?
Strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, Mr. Gates's comments do pose a difficult problem, and I think the amendment merits support only if to flush out the full purpose of the majority. That is to say, if they, to, you know, draw them out as to whether or not this is an apolitical effort. It seems to me worse, it's, and I think Mr. Gates is nevertheless right, to, and this, and the point about the social media searching that the FBI has undertaken a $27 million contract to do, to the point Mr. Gates made about Pegasus and the ability there, remember that we had the Assistant Director for Cyber here a week ago, I guess it was, maybe two? I think it was last week, and he said that he could offer no information about any new safeguards the FBI has adopted since 2017 to ensure that private data stores accessible to the U.S. security state, the FBI and so forth, were not being tapped by private contractors to serve their own purposes, political purposes. So, at least if you're going to, if you're prepared to, to bat down any suggestion of political purpose, you would allow it to be even-handed, and not only to target extremist movements associated with the right wing, but to recognize that there are many of these. Antifa is not, I mean, I guess the chairman's position continues to be that Antifa is a So, I think, it does pose difficult problems, but I mean, that, boy, this gets more and more complicated and more and more troubling all along. And if we are, and this notion of, of apparently politicizing the power of federal criminal law enforcement, and to provide all these continuing, it's not that we're worried about how we correct abuses that have been going on in the past alone, but they continue to pile on additional capabilities to spy on Americans. And they're, and they use this terminology, I mean, again, this legislation recently enjoyed bipartisan support, because we didn't know that you meant something different by domestic terrorism than we thought you meant. But if you mean, school, parents of schoolchildren are domestic terrorists, and we can't get a clear answer on whether you're going to pursue that or not, the problems get harder to answer, questions get harder to answer. So, I got to support the amendment, but I got to say, it really serves to emphasize that this bill is rotten under the circumstances. So, I'll seek to see whether anybody wants me to yield to them, seeing none, I'll yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Who else seeks recognition? For what purpose does Mr. Roy seek recognition?
Strike the last word.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dean.
Sorry.
What purpose does Ms. Dean seek recognition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Roy. I am-
Gentleman ladies recognized.
Yes, I move to strike the last word. I speak as opposed to this amendment, but more importantly, my goal is to redirect us to the importance of this bill and get away from these distracting faux arguments that are putting up faux information without ever going back to what is at the, the purpose of this bill. We know that hate crimes exist in this country, we know that hate crimes are on the rise. 8,263 hate crimes in a single year, and that's the cases we know about. 8,263. That averages to more than 22 hate crimes every single day. Of these, 62% were motivated by racial or ethnic bias. We must do better than this. We are called, as a nation, we are called as a legislative body, to do better than this. Congress has the power to fight back against domestic terrorism. I don't understand why the folks on the other side of the aisle don't join us in that fight against domestic terrorism. That is having the impact of terror, but is also costing lives. So, today, I'm very proud to lend my support to the underlying bill that we should be focused on, H.R. 350, the Domestic Terrorism Prevention Act. The legislation requires DOJ, FBI, and DHS to provide training to assist state, local, and tribal law enforcement agencies in detecting, deterring, and defended, defending Americans from acts of domestic terrorism and white supremacy. Finally, DTPA directs DHS, DOJ, FBI, forgive the acronyms, and the Department of Defense to establish an inter-agency task force to share information to combat white supremacist infiltration in the uniform services and federal law enforcement. Ladies and gentlemen, January 6th personally reminded every person in this room, every person in this Capitol, how dangerous the combination of radicalism and hate can become. I commend Rep. Schneider, Chairman Nadler, and the other bipartisan co-sponsors of this bill for a powerful bill. I will yield the remainder of my time to anyone that, who seeks it. Otherwise, I yield my time, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman lady yields her ti, uh, yields back. For what purpose does Mr. Roy seek recognition?
Strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
Respectfully to my colleague Ms. Dean about the comment about faux arguments, I won't rehash the argument that I made on the Bishop Amendment. I mean, obviously, it failed, but I, I don't believe it's a faux argument to be talking about the power of government being used to target parents. And that's very specifically what's happening, is by definition, in the whistleblower documentation and in what we know is reported about Mr. Smith. And I would just ask my Democratic colleagues to talk to Mr. Smith. Have Mr. Smith come in, and then tell him that his argument is faux. Say that what happened to him, or having the National School Board Association coordinate with the White House and the FBI to have a tag going after parents, and then say the reason for that is a guy like Mr. Smith going to a school board. Tell him that it's, that that's a faux argument on behalf of him to say, "We're concerned about tracking of parents when his daughter was raped in a bathroom." I'd just like to see the look on his face when my Democratic colleagues say that it is a faux argument in defense of his liberties. I would argue, on the, on the issue at hand, I'm sympathetic to Mr. Gates's point. I'm probably persuaded along the lines of my colleague from North Carolina's point about my friend from Florida's making very clear the politicized nature of this bill, right? I mean, that's the purpose of it. It's, it's putting a slant in the code. It's, it's a targeting very specifically without a full context of the blindfolds of justice that we know are supposed to be rooted in our justice system going after and looking at criminal activity, regardless of why that criminal activity is occurring. The motives are what you use to go kind of figure out and track it, but the criminal activity is criminal activity. It's violence, or it's murder, or it's whatever's happening. And, and you can go root it out, and we, our, our law enforcement officials, and many of us in this room have served in some capacity in prosecution or Attorney's General Offices or whatever, our law enforcement community is fully empowered right now to go after whoever they want to go after, if they're bad guys. And the state authorities and local authorities and federal authorities, they're fully empowered to go after bad guys. So, if there's bad guys, go after them. But no, no, we know what this is about, this is a political piece of legislation. That's what it is. And everybody objectively observing it knows, it's a political piece of legislation. So, we say, oh, well, BLM, the chairman said-
So we say, oh, well, BLM, the chairman said, don't say anything negative about BLM. These are peaceful protests, he said. You look at any data, we had 140 cities in 2020 with BLM protests at the root of them of $2 billion of damage, $2 billion with a B, billion dollars of damage. Stories about the BLM co-founder, Patrice Cullors, said in a surface video from 2015 that she and her fellow organizers are trained Marxists, quote, unquote. She was the protege of Eric Mann, a Weather Underground domestic terror organization, spent years absorbing the Marxist-Lenin ideology that shaped her worldview. The first thing I think is that we actually do have an ideological frame, quote, "We are trained Marxists. We are super versed on sort of ideological theories." I could go on and on. Look, my friend from Florida is simply making the point that, you know, if you're going to have a politicized piece of language that's focusing on a particular group, he's just simply saying, well, let's just make clear and let's focus on these other groups, but my colleagues on the other side of the aisle are going to say no. If it's just objective, then what are you worried about? If BLM's not doing anything, then what are you worried about? Just put them in there, and if it's peaceful protest, there's no concern because the power of the FBI, apparently, according to my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, is nothing to be worried about. So just put BLM in there and say, okay, go on about your day, peaceful protesters. But you don't want to do that. And that's the plain reality of the situation. And so I will be supporting my friend from Florida's amendment. I yield back.
The gentleman yields back. Does anyone else seek recognition? Not the question occurs on the amendment. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. No. The pin in the chair, the nose have it.
Ask for a recorded vote.
Recorded vote is requested. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Nadler.
No.
Mr. Nadler votes no. Ms. Lofgren.
Her ability to schedule.
No.
Hire a scheduler until we're able to do that.
Ms. Lofgren votes no. Ms. Jackson Lee. Ms. Jackson Lee. Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cohen.
All that she can do scheduled abruptly, then we'll move on to that role.
Mr. Cohen votes no. Mr. Johnson of Georgia.
No.
Say yes.
Mr. Johnson of Georgia votes no.
Thank you.
Ms. Bass.
Bass votes no.
Ms. Bass votes no. Mr. Jeffries. Mr. Cicilline. Mr. Cicilline votes no. Mr. Swalwell.
No.
Mr. Swalwell votes no. Mr. Lou.
No.
Mr. Lou votes no. Mr. Raskin.
No.
Mr. Raskin votes no. Ms. Dryopaul.
No.
Ms. Dryopaul votes no. Ms. Demmings.
No.
Ms. Demmings votes no. Mr. Correa.
Correa votes no.
Mr. Correa votes no. Ms. Scanlon. Ms. Garcia.
No.
Ms. Garcia votes no. Mr. Nagus.
No.
Mr. Nagus votes no. Ms. Macbeth.
Macbeth votes no.
Ms. Macbeth votes no. Mr. Stanton.
Stanton votes no.
Mr. Stanton votes no. Ms. Dean?
No.
Ms. Dean votes no. Ms. Escobar?
No.
Ms. Escobar votes no. Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Jones votes no. Ms. Frost? Ms. Ross votes no. Ms. Bush?
Aye. Bush votes no.
Ms. Bush votes no. Mr. Jordan? Mr. Jordan votes aye. Mr. Shabbat?
Aye.
Mr. Shabbat votes aye. Mr. Gohmert? Mr. Issa? Mr. Issa votes aye. Mr. Buck? Mr. Gates? Mr. Gates votes no. Mr. Johnson of Louisiana? Mr. McClintock? Mr. Stube? Mr. Stube votes aye. Mr. Tiffany? Mr. Tiffany votes aye. Mr. Massey? Mr. Massey votes aye. Mr. Roy? Mr. Roy votes aye. Mr. Bishop? Mr. Bishop votes aye. Ms. Fishbach?
Aye.
Ms. Fishbach votes aye. Ms. Spartz?
Yes.
Ms. Spartz votes aye. Mr. Fitzgerald? Mr. Fitzgerald votes aye. Mr. Benz? Mr. Benz votes aye. Mr. Owens? Mr. Owens votes aye.
How is Mr. Deutsch recorded?
Mr. Deutsch is not recorded.
No.
Mr. Deutsch votes no.
How is Mr. Gohmert?
Mr. Gohmert votes aye.
Are there any other members who wish to be recorded who have not been recorded? The clerk will report. Mr. Biggs, I'm sorry, Mr. Biggs.
Mr. Chairman, there are 15 ayes and 23 nos.
The amendment is not agreed to. Are there any further amendments in the nature, to the amendment in the nature of a substitute?
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment at the desk.
For what purpose does Mr. Biggs seek recognition?
I have an amendment at the desk.
Clerk will report the amendment. Mr. Chairman, I reserve a point of order. Point of order is reserved.
Amendment to the amendment in the nature of a substitute to H.R. 350 offered by Mr. Biggs of Arizona, page 16, line 10, after act, insert the following. None of the funds authorized to be appropriated in this act shall be used to monitor, analyze, investigate, or prosecute any individual who has declined the administration of a vaccine for COVID-19 or expressed opposition to such administration.
Does the gentleman insist on his point of order? Oh, I'm sorry. Gentleman is recognized. Speak on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was patiently waiting. I knew you were busy. For more than a year, Democrats have tried to mandate Americans receive the COVID-19 vaccine and have attempted to force Americans to choose between their jobs and the shot. They've tried to prevent Americans from being able to eat in restaurants or attend indoor events unless they get the shot and have labeled Americans as science deniers if they didn't get the shot. And now DHS is identifying Americans who express their personal views about the vaccine as a potential terrorist. On February 7th, 2022, DHS released a National Terrorism Advisory System bulletin that stated, quote, "The primary terrorism-related threat to the United States continues to stem from lone offenders or small cells of individuals who are motivated by a range of foreign and/or domestic grievances, often cultivated through the consumption of certain online content," close quote. The bulletin goes on to say, quote, "False and misleading narratives regarding COVID-19" as an example. States further, meanwhile, COVID-19 mitigation measures, particularly COVID-19 vaccine and mask mandates, have been used by domestic violent extremists to justify violence since 2020 and could continue to inspire these extremists to target government health care and academic institutions that they associate with those measures. Here it is in writing from DHS. Expressing concerns or non-government approved positions regarding the COVID-19 vaccine gets you on DHS radar. This can't happen, not in a free society, not in America. Americans should be able to express concerns about the vaccine without fear that DHS or the FBI will label them a domestic terrorist. Many Americans do not believe that they should be forced to take a vaccine for COVID-19. We can debate the science behind that belief some other time because that's not the purpose of this amendment. Last month, before the Russian invasion of Ukraine forced it off the front pages, truckers in Canada were peacefully protesting vaccine mandates in their country. Their protests sparked similar protests by truckers in other countries, including ours. After several weeks of peacefully protesting in the streets of Ottawa and other parts of the country, Prime Minister Trudeau decided to use his emergency powers, and Trudeau's government froze not only the truckers' bank accounts but those that support their efforts. In some instances, Canadian police pulled the truckers out of their trucks and arrested them. Many of the truckers had their trucks seized by the Canadian authorities under these emergency powers. Just a year ago, these same truckers were called heroes along with first responders because they continued to work every day while everyone else stayed home for the never-ending two weeks to stop the spread. Now they're seen as enemies of the state in Canada. Remember that those truckers, because we report so much from Canada, helped keep us fed and fueled through the pandemic. Unfortunately for Canada, they do not have First Amendment protection like we do in this country. This is not just a Canadian problem, however. Over the past year, President Biden has attempted to force military, federal workers, health care workers, federal contractors, and others to get vaccinated or lose their jobs. Democrats will stop at nothing in their attempt to force everyone to get the shot. This amendment merely ensures that individuals have the rights to make their own decisions regarding COVID-19 vaccines and are able to express their views without fear of being treated as a domestic terrorist. Mr. Chairman, I submit for the record the February 7th, 2022 bulletins from the Department of Homeland Security National Terrorism Advisory System. And I also submit an article from March 13th, 2022 that says, Secretary Mayorkas releases new rules on extremism. DHS will target anyone who believes the election was stolen or who challenged Fauci's ever-changing COVID narrative. Mr. Chairman, the underlying bill.
Bad objection. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the underlying bill expands the authority of the federal police apparatus. We should protect those who make this decision, important decision, regarding their own health care. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Does the gentleman, the gentleman yields back. Does the gentleman withdraw his point of order?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Point of order is withdrawn. I recognize myself in opposition to the amendment, although funds are authorized in general, and therefore, the, this amendment is not ungermain under the rules of the House. It is wildly ungermain in reality, having nothing to do with the bill. Nothing in the bill says anything about vaccines or COVID-19 or anything else. The bill simply sets up a bureau within the Department of Justice for anti-terrorism purposes and has nothing to do with vaccines or COVID or whatever one may think of them. So on that grounds of total irrelevance, I oppose the amendment. I yield back. Who seeks recognition? If no one seeks. Question occurs on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. For what purpose does Mr. Jordan seek?
Strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would yield some time to the gentleman from Arizona. So I do find it a bit entertaining, whilst at the same time frustrating, when I hear, oh, this is just irrelevant. I thought I made it pretty clear, I'm reading from the National Terrorism Advisory Bulletin from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, that if you have a heterodox position on COVID-19 vaccines, they view you as a potential domestic terrorist. That's real. That's not irrelevant. That is part of the problem with what, as the gentleman from Texas, Mr. Roy, said earlier, when you're shifting and you're kind of slanting the underlying predicate for investigations through the federal police apparatus. The federal police apparatus has basically said, you take a heterodox position on COVID-19 vaccines, we've got you in our sights because we think that is a potential domestic terrorist. And I just think that we ought to make that very clear, that that is not to be the case. It's not irrelevant, it's not irrational, it's actually based on these federal, the federal documentation that's defining what terrorism is. And I'll yield back to the gentleman from Ohio. I thank the gentleman for yielding back. Yeah, it's certainly not irrelevant. It's very real. I mean, someone said that, you know, the toughest part of 15 days is slow the spread is always the first 18 months. I mean, we've lived with this for a long time. And think of everything that, here's another aspect of this. Think of everything they told us, the government, Dr. Fauci and others told us, that turned out to be absolutely inaccurate. Remember when Joe Biden said he had a plan to deal with COVID? Remember that one? Remember when he said he would never impose a mandate? I mean, he did, so much so, the Supreme Court had to tell him it was unconstitutional. Remember when they told us it didn't come from a lab? Sure looks like it did. Remember when they told us it wasn't gain-of-function research? Sure looks like it was. Remember when they told us no American tax dollars were used to fund this lab in Wuhan? Wow, that was wrong too. Remember when they told us this one? They said the vaccinated can't get it. They had to walk that one back. Remember when they said the vaccinated can't transmit it? Wrong again. Then they told us there was no real, no, no natural immunity, not, not, not. That's eight things they told us that turned out to be absolutely wrong. Eight different things. So you take that coupled with what the gentleman who sponsored the amendment had to say, I would say this is pretty darn relevant. Folks, I represent, I still remember in April of 2020, then Attorney General Barr, when all these mandates were coming down on us, then Attorney General Barr said, "The Constitution is not suspended during a crisis." And amen to that. I would argue that's when it's most important. That's when the rules under our Constitution that protect our liberties are the most important. So this is a good amendment. Gets at something that we've all had to live with, our constituents certainly have. They couldn't, people who make things, grow things and move things, people in agriculture and manufacturing and trucking, they couldn't, they couldn't do the, they couldn't zoom it in, they couldn't work remotely, they had to go work. This is as real as it gets. So this amendment's a darn good amendment, and I would urge, I would urge support for it, and without a yield back.
The gentleman yields back. Does anybody else seek recognition? For what purpose does Mr. Biggs seek recognition? Sorry about that, Gates. Sorry about that.
We get confused a lot, Madam Chair. I move to strike the last word.
The gentleman is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, the Democrat majority thinks it's crazy that Republicans are offering an amendment to their domestic extremism bill to say that people who have dissenting views about coronavirus and the vaccine should not be deemed domestic terrorists. They think that's nuts. And it kinda is. And it's crazy that that's necessary. I mean, I never would have thought, when I got elected, that we would wake up one day and the CDC, who I thought were the good guys, would want the powers of the CIA and then end up with the credibility of CNN? We have seen people doxed, labeled, deplatformed, lose their jobs, lose standing in society because they have dissenting views on the vaccine and coronavirus, and it does not really strain credulity that some of those factors from big tech would gaslight the most dangerous elements of big government. And so I'm supporting the gentleman's amendment, but I'm somewhat disappointed that it is in fact as necessary it is. And I'd yield to the gentleman from Arizona if he seeks the time.
Thank you. I'm going to yield back to you, I think.
I yield to the gentleman from North Carolina.
I thank the gentleman. Mr. Biggs, I've got to say that I was out of the room, but you're on a subject matter that is fascinating to me, and that's this National Terrorism Advisory System bulletin at the top, summary of the terrorism threat to the United States. And as you say, how can this be irrelevant? Because it talks about those who are involved in misleading narratives, false or misleading narratives regarding absence.
narratives regarding unsubstantiated, widespread election fraud, and COVID-19. I mean, that's part of the problem here is this entire debate, as it's unfolding through the several amendments, is focused on the question of what do you mean by domestic terrorism? Because the majority has seized the term domestic terrorism and is turning it for political reasons. This is no joke. This is the National Terrorism Advisory System. And I guess that's the thing, after 9/11, I can remember we had red light and yellow light and green light in terms of what the threats were from terrorism to the nation. It was something over which Americans were unified, perhaps in an unprecedented way. And this, I guess that's the same system. This is official business. And they're saying somebody who-- you know, I don't even know what they mean by false or misleading, because that's an arguable point, whether something's false or misleading. But about COVID-19, if you just-- somebody has even-- let's say they have a wacky idea about COVID-19. Why is that in the Terrorism Advisory System Bulletin? And if DHS, in all of its bureaucratic wisdom, deemed it appropriate to include it there, how can you assure me that the FBI is not going to be reporting on people who have unusual views about COVID-19 in the domestic terrorism stuff you're setting up? This has all been disconnected from its moorings. You can't even count on language. You're playing with stuff that is the most-- the gravest of matters of public policy, and you're using it for us to score petty political points. What in the world? What kind of leadership is this? So the gentleman's amendment is well-founded, and I yield back to whoever's got the time.
I yield to the gentleman from Ohio.
Well, remember, whatever-- it couldn't have come from a lab. It was a bat to a pangolin to a hippopotamus to Joe Rogan. Remember? That's what they told us. And remember when someone like Mr. Rogan questioned that, simply by having a guest on his show talking about it? Oh, my goodness. He faced what Barry Weiss, when she resigned from the New York Times-- not on the right, center-left Barry Weiss when she resigned-- he faced what Mr. Gates referenced before, the digital thunderdome, for simply questioning something with someone on his podcast. And now we have this document from the government that Mr. Biggs and Mr. Bishop have pointed out. That's our concern here. So again, another good amendment, common sense idea. Let's see if the Democrats will take--
Time of the gentleman has expired. Who seeks recognition?
Mr. Chairman, I seek recognition.
For what purpose does the gentlelady seek recognition?
To speak on the amendment.
Strike the last word?
To strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
Thank you.
Having struck the last word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a long day, third committee meeting today. I just wanted to point out that there seems to be an overbroad nature to this amendment because it says that you can't use the funds to prosecute an individual who's declined the administration of a vaccine or expressed opposition to such administration. And that might prevent the looking into somebody who just bombed a church, who said that they didn't want to have a vaccine, or somebody who just committed a heinous Asian hate crime as part of a conspiracy, but who had expressed opposition to the administration of a vaccine. And I think that this is overbroad. It will prevent looking into legitimate acts of domestic terrorism. And for that reason, I oppose the amendment, and I would hope that the sponsor of the amendment might withdraw.
Gentlelady yields back. Who else seeks recognition?
Mr. Chairman.
For what purposes, Mr. Bishop seek recognition?
Move to strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
So the gentlelady from North Carolina and I attended law school together, and I think, with all respect, that the concern is not well-founded. Obviously, what is being protected here is someone who is being targeted because they have declined the administration of a vaccine to COVID-19 or expressed opposition to such administration. I think the language is entirely clear, and the court would be able to handle that--
Will the gentleman yield?
Well, I was going to yield to Mr. Biggs, because he-- and I'll do that, and if I get time still, and when he's done, I'll come back to whoever wanted to do that. I yield to Mr. Biggs.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. I appreciate you yielding time. So I find that argument actually very interesting and intriguing because I don't think that this provision in the amendment excludes other predicates for investigation. That would require, I would believe, a more affirmative statement that would specifically preclude, and that's not the case here. And so if you've got somebody who blew up a church, you'd have a predicate to investigate them because they blew up a church. If they beat up somebody, you'd have predicate because they-- because they were-- they beat up somebody, they committed an assault. So I'm not persuaded by that argument.
Does the gentleman yield?
I'll yield to-- I'll yield to Mr. Bishop.
I yield to the gentlelady from North Carolina.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Mr. Bishop. This amendment says any individual. It doesn't say a person who is monitored or solely for the reason. It says any individual. To me, the word "any" means anybody, including somebody who blew up a church, including somebody who committed Asian hate crimes, including somebody who threatened a synagogue.
Yeah, but--
Any individual means any individual.
Right, but "any individual" isn't the last word in the sentence. It goes on to who has declined the administration of a vaccine to COVID-19 or expressed opposition to such administration. With that, I yield to the gentleman from Texas, Mr. Roy.
Well, I think I associate myself with the remarks of the gentleman from North Carolina and the way I interpret the language, but let me just say, you know, in terms of time, if the gentlelady is intrigued with the purpose of the amendment, which is to ensure that no one is being targeted for their beliefs on COVID-19, and I'm sure we could come up with an amenable clarification to the amendment to ensure that there's no vagueness in the language. I assume the gentleman from Arizona would be happy to do so, if that's the actual intent. I suspect it's not, but I interpret this language the way the author suggested, the way the gentleman from North Carolina suggested. But if the goal here, if the gentlelady from North Carolina is in agreement that we should ensure that people are not being targeted for domestic terrorism because of their beliefs with respect to COVID-19 and the actions they've taken with respect to vaccine choices or expressing opposition to the administration of vaccines or any of the data associated with it, I'm sure we can accommodate language to ensure that's--
Mr. Bishop, will you yield?
Reclaiming my time. Let me say this first, and then I'll yield to the chairman. It seems to me that the objection of my colleague from North Carolina strains at a technicality in order to avoid the substantive point, which has been very much substantiated by the document that I read from, that comes from the Department of Homeland Security. And was that Mr. Cicilline? Who asked--
Yes, it was, Mr. Bishop.
And he's over there. Yes, I'd yield to the gentleman from Rhode Island.
Thank you, Mr.-- I just want to say, I hope you'll acknowledge that it appears to most of us on the committee that Ms. Ross may have done better in law school than you did, but I think her interpretation is exactly right. It's the language of the amendment, in fact, would exempt everyone, and that's clearly not your intention. So with all due respect, I ask you to withdraw the amendment. I don't expect that you want to give an excuse to every potential criminal in America who happens not to be vaccinated, a get-out-of-jail-free card, and I think Ms. Ross is exactly right, and her legal analysis, what your intention is, that your hope it doesn't-- isn't interpreted that way is not sufficient. It's the language of the amendment that says exactly what it says. So maybe chalk this one up to an excellent legal education for Ms. Ross, from the very same institution where you studied.
There is no doubt about Mrs. Ross's excellent success in the field of law, and no doubt about that. It does turn out, Mr. Cicilline, it's not my amendment.
That's easier to--
And with that, my time's expired. I yield back.
Gentleman's expired. Does anyone else seek recognition? For what purposes, Mr. Roy seek recognition?
Move to strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
Well, I'm glad to see that Mr. Cicilline joins Ms. Ross from North Carolina in their desire to see this amendment get passed and be willing to discuss tweaking the amendment to accomplish the objective in question. As again, Mr. Bishop pointed out, we're gagging on a gnat when we understand the purpose of the amendment. And the purpose of the amendment is pretty clear, right? As Mr. Biggs said, we're talking about power of the FBI, power of the federal government, and we're talking about here, key factors contributing to the current heightened threat environment include the proliferation of false or misleading narratives which sow discord or undermine public trust in United States government institutions. For example, there is widespread online proliferation of false or misleading narratives regarding unsubstantiated widespread election fraud and COVID-19 grievances associated with these themes. And it goes on to talk about the violence associated with COVID-19. So that's the point. The point here is empowering the federal government to go after people for their belief system with respect to COVID-19, and then having the powers that be in all of their infinite wisdom at CDC, NIH, FBI, all the enforcement authorities make determinations about what is or is not the appropriate information to be sharing. What is the appropriate information to be sharing about vaccines? My colleagues on the other side of the aisle, are you the ones who make that determination? Are you the ones who get to decide what is in the proper interest of the health of the American people about what shot they must get before they lose their job? What shot they must get before they lose their career in the United States military or a healthcare individual who was a hero a year and change ago, but now is losing his or her job because he or she believes it might be in their health interest not to get a needle stuck in their arm? But no, no, in your infinite wisdom, you want to make them not only lose their job but maybe domestic terrorists? Excellent. Well done. Because I'm sure the American people love that. You want to talk about the Vanity Fair article from March 31, 2022 by Catherine Eban, who I'd like to, without objection, introduce to the record--
Bad objection.
--within which it talks about a biologist named Jesse Bloom sending a draft of an unpublished scientific paper, and then goes down to talk about how Bloom's paper was a product of detective work he'd undertaken after noticing that a number of early SARS-CoV-2 genomic sequences mentioned in a published paper from China had somehow vanished without a trace. Then it goes on to talk about piecing together clues Bloom established that the NIH itself had deleted the sequences from its own archive at the request of researchers in Wuhan. It goes on to categorize a very interesting question about the origins of the vaccine and what NIH did in response to it. Should-- am I a domestic terrorist? Am I a domestic terrorist now? This is going to be on C-SPAN. We're going to circulate this clip, and I promise you, I'll tweet this out. Am I a domestic terrorist because I dare to question the NIH? What if I were to tweet out information that I've been studying about the excess deaths of people between the age of 25 and 44 over the last year? If you actually study the data over the last year and look at those excess deaths, deaths counts that are well into the several hundred thousand range of unexplained deaths? Am I a conspiracy theorist? Am I promoting something as deserving of domestic terrorism because I'm daring to question the almighty power of the federal government deciding what is in my health interest? Is that where the modern Democratic Party has landed? Let us empower bureaucrats to make decisions about what you inject in your arm through the power of government lest you lose your job and now be labeled a domestic terrorist? And that's what we're talking about in this bill, is empowering the federal authorities to go after, quote, "domestic terrorism." And in this case, we're talking about a simple question about whether your belief system with respect to COVID-19, the data you're trying to look at, the information you're trying to share about what actually has occurred. If I want to make a decision about what's in the interest of my 12-year-old son, and I share information with people about whether or not it is a good idea for him to get a vaccination, I share it with my friends in Austin, Texas, am I a domestic terrorist because I dared to question a vaccine that is still only a little over a year old?
Does the gentleman yield for a second?
I'll yield to the chairman. I got 12 seconds left, so you go ahead and--
All right, okay. I'll just point out, one thing you said was that this bill gives the government the power to go after domestic terrorism. The government already has the power to go after domestic terrorism. All this bill does is set up what we think is a better bureaucratic structure for doing so.
Well said. I yield back.
The gentleman yields back. Does anyone else seek recognition? If not, the question occurs on--
Seek recognition.
For what purposes, Mr.-- does gentleman Massey seek recognition?
Move to strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
Let's just summarize this for the folks back home. We've got a bill here, as Chairman Nadler says, that's going to set up more bureaucracy to go after domestic terrorism, and that's probably a good thing. And Mr. Biggs has offered an amendment that says you can't use the funds that are going to be authorized in this bill to investigate, analyze, monitor, or prosecute any individual who's declined the COVID vaccine or expressed opposition to it. This should be-- this is constitutionally redundant, this amendment. It is obvious on its face, but it's not being kicked out by the chairman or anybody else here for being non-german because it is germane. This should terrify you. This amendment is germane to the bill because the FBI has already indicated that your opposition to taking the vaccine or to spreading information that might be true but the CDC doesn't agree with will qualify you to be targeted as a possible domestic terrorist.
You're definitely a domestic terrorist.
So, listen, was-- when the CDC changed the definition of vaccination, they changed the very definition of vaccination. If somebody had the gall to point out that that goes against 250 years of medicine, of science, the redefinition of vaccination, should that make them a domestic terrorist? No! This amendment is spot-on. The CDC has been involved in the past two years trying to cover up something we've known about for 10,000 years, natural immunity. What if you dared to say that I trust my natural immunity to protect me from the next infection of this virus? Should that-- what if I dared-- okay, maybe I have said that for two years, but that shouldn't make you a domestic terrorist. Come on. Why would the Democrats be opposed to this amendment? I don't know. Some have said, well, the language, it should-- there should be a for where there's an and or something like that. Well, let's fix it then, because the fact that this amendment is germane is terrifying. The fact that we even need to mention this amendment is terrifying. The fact that moms are going to be targeted as domestic terrorists because they think their five-year-old doesn't need the freaking vaccine because they've looked at the data--
And they don't.
--they've seen that the flu presents more of a risk to their child than COVID does, any of the variants. Does that make that mom a domestic terrorist? What if-- I mean-- it's ridiculous that the Democrats are even opposing this. It should be adopted by unanimous consent. If they have some problem with the language, then let's fix the language, but let's not label moms domestic terrorists for saying they don't want their child to get the vaccine. Let's not label expecting mothers domestic terrorists because they say, I want to go ahead and have my baby before I get this vaccine, because there's-- this data's not been out there, this vaccine-- by the way, it could just as easily say, you can't be-- you can't be labeled a domestic terrorist by the FBI for refusing a medical treatment that only one of three corporations are allowed to provide in this country.
With no liability.
In other words, if you don't accept a medical treatment for one of these three giant corporations, then you could be--
With no liability.
--you could be a terrorist. Yes, and there's-- and this is the other thing. Joe Biden has said the only industry that's immune to prosecution or immune to liability is the gun industry. That's ridiculous. They can-- they get sued all the time for defective products, but who doesn't get sued? Who never gets sued for a defective product? Who's got emergency use? Who's got the PREP Act? The vaccine manufacturers. Does that make me a domestic terrorist for saying the facts? It shouldn't, and this amendment should be adopted. And I yield back the balance of my time.
Gentleman yields back the balance of his time. I think we're prepared to vote on the amendment. I think we're prepared to vote on the amendment. Does Mr. Raskin seek recognition?
If that's okay, let's vote, Mr. Chair. I yield back.
Mr. Gohmert?
Please strike the last word.
Gentleman is recognized.
I yield to my friend from Texas, Mr. Roy.
I yield to my friend from Texas, Mr. Roy.
I thank my friend from Texas. I only wanted to, to underscore what the gentleman from Kentucky just said, and, and put in to one additional point, which is how many of, of the people that I've talked to, doctors on the front lines, doctors out there who have been trying to help Americans over the last two years, who have been pilloried, who have lost licenses, who have been targeted and attacked for daring to put out possible treatments, and to put out possible ideas that might vary from the infinite wisdom of Anthony Fauci? And, and again, people who share those information and ideas are labeled domestic terrorists. It's absolutely extraordinary that, that, that people in this body think that that's appropriate and okay. But, but it's a real thing. We're sitting here, we're going to miss this thing. There are, right now, there are doctors who are struggling with their licenses, struggling in their businesses, has been attacked, people who have, in their minds, saved people's lives. We're not having any hearings on that. We're not having any hearings before this body dragging in Anthony Fauci, asking him to answer these questions about NIH. We're not dragging in anybody to talk about excess deaths. Study the data. It's a real problem and a real concern. But no, we're not having that conversation. Instead, we can't even get agreement, like my friend from Kentucky said, on a pretty straightforward amendment on something that should terrify everybody, to say that, yeah, you should not be targeted for your belief system about, or frankly, saying, yeah, I don't want my five-year-old, or eight-year-old, or my 12-year-old son to be forced to get a jab, because someone says so. Because someone up in Washington says so. It's absolutely absurd. I want to go back, by the way, to the Vanity Fair article that I put in the record, because I didn't have enough time the first time. I talked about what they talked about, about deleting the data. Let's go down a little further. When one of the individuals in the room, Anderson, see, that's when Anderson made a suggestion that surprised Bloom. He said he was a screener at the pre-print server, which gave him access to papers that weren't yet public. He then offered to either entirely delete the pre-print, or revise it in a way that would leave no record that this had been done. Bloom refused, saying that he doubted other options were appropriate, given the contentious nature of the meeting. And this goes on and on, and talks about Fauci, and talks about all of the things that then flowed from that with respect to Eco Health Alliance, with respect to all of the concerns. I don't know if the gentleman from Ohio wants to jump in, but, but this is what we're talking about. And again, if I shared this information, is this author from the Vanity Fair? Is this a domestic terrorist now? Because it doesn't comport with the narrative from the administration? What exactly makes you a domestic terrorist? What exactly is misinformation? Do we need to go to Twitter? Do we need to go to Facebook to find out what is appropriate information to share? My colleagues on the other side of the aisle, remotely bothered at all that the government can make the decisions about what is or is not proper information to share? And then, oh, you rest easy at night, saying you think the government making decisions about what is proper information to share, under in our Constitution and the First Amendment, resting easy at night that this government can go after individuals for sharing information, raising concerns as alarmed citizens, alarmed parents? I mean, we, we brush over this stuff as if it is not absolutely central to who we are as a people and why we're divided as a nation, when you've got the power of government, and my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, willfully, just whistling Dixie right pa, oh, don't whistle Dixie, sorry. Whistling right past all that is going on here. And that's what's occurring. That's what's occurring.
The gentleman from Ohio wanted to talk...
Well, reclaiming my time, just like to quote a guy named George Orwell, his pen name. He pointed out in 1984, "In a time of universal deceit, telling the truth is a revolutionary act." And I think that's what our concern is, that someone telling the truth now makes them a revolutionary. He also said, "The further society drifts from truth, the more it will hate those who speak it." And some of us have been feeling that hate. I yield my remaining time, Mr. Biggs.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gohmert. So, you know, I just went to a, a little public school for law school, so yeah, Mr. Cicilline, I probably didn't get the same quality education as all the other lawyers on this committee. But what I'll say is this, I'm more than happy to just change, make a small change. If, if you're really concerned, if you really would support this bill, what we do is prosecute any individual...
Time of the gentleman has expired. The, all in favor of the amendment will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? No?
No.
In the opinion, in the opinion of the chair, the noes have it? Recorded vote, sir. Recorded vote is requested. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Nadler?
No.
Mr. Nadler votes no. Ms. Lofgren?
No.
Ms. Lofgren votes no. Ms. Jackson Lee?
No.
Ms. Jackson Lee?
Someone's, Mike is not muted.
Mr. Cohen?
No.
Mr. Cohen votes no. Mr. Johnson of Georgia?
I voted no. You need to record me. I voted no.
Ms. Jackson Lee votes no. Mr. Johnson of Georgia votes no. Mr. Deutsch?
No.
Mr. Deutsch votes no. Ms. Bass?
Not yet.
Ms. Bass?
This is, this is the thing here, I think. Maybe that's it.
Ms. Bass votes no. Mr. Cicilline? Mr. Cicilline votes no. Mr. Swallow?
No.
Mr. Swallow votes no. Mr. Lou? Mr. Raskin?
No.
Mr. Raskin votes no. Ms. Schiappal?
No.
Ms. Schiappal votes no. Ms. Demings?
No.
Ms. Demings votes no. Mr. Correa? Ms. Scanlon? Ms. Garcia?
No.
Ms. Garcia votes no. Mr. Nagus?
No.
Mr. Nagus votes no. Ms. Macbeth?
No.
Ms. Macbeth votes no. Mr. Stanton?
No.
Mr. Stanton votes no. Ms. Dean?
No.
Ms. Dean votes no. Ms. Escobar?
No.
Ms. Escobar votes no. Ms. Ross? Ms. Ross votes no. Ms. Bush?
Bush votes no.
Ms. Bush votes no. Mr. Jordan? Mr. Jordan votes yes. Mr. Shabbat?
Aye.
Mr. Shabbat votes aye. Mr. Gohmert? Mr. Gohmert votes aye. Mr. Issa?
Aye.
Mr. Issa votes aye. Mr. Buck? Mr. Gates? Mr. Johnson of Louisiana? Mr. Biggs? Mr. Biggs votes aye. Mr. McClintock? Mr. McClintock votes aye. Mr. Stube?
Yes.
Mr. Stube votes yes. Mr. Tiffany? Mr. Tiffany votes aye. Mr. Massey? Mr. Massey votes aye. Mr. Roy?
Aye.
Mr. Roy votes aye. Mr. Bishop? Mr. Bishop votes aye. Ms. Fishbach?
Aye.
Ms. Fishbach votes aye. Ms. Bartz?
Yes.
Ms. Bartz votes yes. Mr. Fitzgerald? Mr. Fitzgerald votes aye. Mr. Benz? Mr. Benz votes yes. Mr. Owens? Mr. Owens votes aye.
Mr. Gates?
Mr. Gates votes aye.
Are there any other members who wish to be recorded who have not been recorded?